I'd like to call to order the June 10th, 2019, meeting of the Highland Park Board of Education. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of the public bodies in which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the Highland Park Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting, setting forth the time, date, and location to be submitted for publication to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger, and posted on the board's website at least 48 hours in advance of this meeting. Members of the public who wish to address the board will given the opportunity to do so before the board adjourns for the evening. Lynda, could we please have a roll call?
Ms. Byer? Ms. Simorasty?
Here.
Ms. Coleman?
Ms. Gowan?
Here.
Mr. Krieger?
Here.
Mr. Magaziner?
Here.
Ms. McValdendi-Nicola?
Here.
She said here.
Oh, here.
Okay, sorry.
My mic might not be on.
Mr. Roslevich?
We got you.
I got you. Mr. Woodward?
Here.
Okay, be it resolved pursuant to the Sunshine Act NJSA 10-4-12 and 13, the Highland Park Board of Education will now meet in closed session to discuss matters related to the superintendent's evaluation, student discipline, and HIB. These exemptions are permitted to be discussed in closed session in accordance with NJSA 10-4-13. Information regarding the board's closed-session discussion will be disclosed to the public as soon as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I get a motion to convene to closed session?
So moved.
I got a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Get a motion to reconvene to public sessions?
Uh huh.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And if we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, it's that giant thing right up there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
All right, well, it's so nice to see everyone here today. We're so often here just on our own, talking to the air. So it's wonderful to have so many students and faculty and their families here to celebrate everybody's accomplishments this year. We're really looking forward to that part of our agenda, which will only be a few items away, so bear with us while we do a few more things. Lynda, we don't have any other communications other than what's on the agenda? We had a few more, but they'll go on the next agenda. Okay. And then, item number eight on the agenda, we have some corrections to the minutes, and none of that's changed since the last agenda, right, Lynda? It's all the same that was there on items eight and nine?
There is, excuse me, there is one addition to number nine.
Okay.
I believe it was Danielle Leeper was added.
I'm sorry, say that again?
I believe that Danielle Leeper was added to the list.
Okay. All right, but otherwise, no changes from what was at the, on the last agenda. So that's items, number eight is corrections to minutes, number nine is correction to minutes, and number 10 is the approval of minutes from the April 15th, 2019, meeting, April 29th, 2019, meeting, the May 6th, 2019, meeting, and the May 13th, 2019, meeting. Can I get a motion to move those three items, eight, nine, and 10?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on any of those? Nope? Okay, seeing none. Lynda, could we please have a roll call?
Ms. Simorasty?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McValdendi-Nicola?
Yes.
Mr. Roslevich?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Okay, and that bought us enough time for Zaiu to take his seat. Hello, Zaiu?
Sorry, sorry.
No worries at all. Like I said, perfect timing. So we'll move on to our student representative report.
I'd like to kick it in, unless you would like to go ahead. Say a few words.
So, school is almost done wrapping up. So, not much to announce, but Irving is having a pre-K musical this week with the last day of school on June 21st. Bartle, for Bartle, there's a Bartle Awards Assembly on the 13th, as well as a Bartle PTO Boardwalk to Run for Fun, and the 5th grade picnic is coming up on the 14th. For the middle school, the 8th grade trip to Dorney Park is on the 12th, followed by the 8th grade dance on the 13th. There's also a graduation ceremony on the 21st.
The middle school, the finals start on Thursday this week. Graduation is coming up on the 20th.
Turn on your microphones. I think it's good. It's on.
Okay. Graduation starts the 20th, and then also, the Science League has a party on Wednesday, celebrating their 3rd place placement in the state for Physics 1, and 9th place placement for Chemistry 2, and 5th or 6th place placement for Physics 2.
And prom, how was prom?
Okay. Did you want to?
I'm not making it.
Okay. Are we going to introduce the new student reps now, or?
I can do that now. It's going to be a recognition.
Okay.
I'll take this opportunity to recognize the two new student representatives who will be replacing the irreplaceable Avery and Zaiu. If you could please stand, Stella Draper and Andy Land are the representatives. Chosen from a vast field of scholars, we do appreciate you being here tonight. You'll stay with us till about 11, no, I'm sorry, till about 9:30. I will ask you, though, when we're all done, and everybody sits out, that you sit in the front bleacher area so you can observe Washington, how this all plays out. We will induct you formally, swear you in, in September at the first meeting, okay? All right?
Congratulations. Okay, so then we'll...
Pass back.
Send it back over to you.
So it's my sincere pleasure to take the podium and begin to recognize some of the very special people who are here in the audience. I greatly, greatly appreciate the fact that I see so many colleagues here to support, besides family, of course, support their peers. I think it speaks volumes about the sense of community here in the school district. So the first thing I'd like to do is introduce our principals. We'll start with the lower grade first, and have them say a few words about those teachers and support professionals we're honoring this year. So, Principal McNally, would you like to take the podium? As Megan is coming to the podium, I just want to tell you how this works. So after we do call your name, we'd like you to come up. We're going to present you with a little gift, Teachers and Support Professionals of the Year, and then I'd like you to stay and have us take some pictures together so I can put together a news blurb for our website and broadcast you to the world. Thank you, Megan.
Well, hi, everybody. Welcome. We have a very important job tonight. We have so many wonderful professionals to recognize, and I'm kind of excited I get to go first. So, it has been said, "The mediocre teacher tells, the good teacher explains, and the superior teacher demonstrates, and the great teacher inspires." It is clear to me tonight that we are in the presence of greatness, kind of like I just said, and to all of the educators we honor here this evening, congratulations, and thank you for inspiring our children. Great teachers are the soul of an enlightened society. We entrust in you the most precious thing we know in life, our children, and for most of us, our students. Irving's nominated governor's educator of the year, Ms. Michelle Daley, encompasses all the qualities that embody a magnificent teacher. She is calm, kind, patient, results-driven, yet inquisitive, and focused on improving her craft. She is a master at building a strong sense of community in her classroom, and her students know they are cared for and expected to care for one another as well. Comments from her many nomination forums include the terms diligent, kind-hearted, and collaborative. She is always ready and willing to confer with other staff members to either get additional assistance for a student or improve her teaching through learning. Ms. Daley has been a huge help with the success of our ELL students in her care. She has taught the ESL Summer School and thrives working with students who need extra assistance with reading, phonics, or math, or all. Because student comfort is so important to Ms. Daley, the students adore her and trust her and know that their needs are being met. She remains in constant contact with the ESL teacher to check on the progress of some of her students, and not only discuss strategies to make them more successful, but really discuss and get to know who they are as people. Ms. Daley is creative and is always looking outside the box to make students successful. Being in her classroom always amazes me. It is, it is bright, it is cheery, the kids are calm, sometimes very quiet, as she'll say, but they're learning and they're happy. And she adapts learning as needed, and she has really taken a leadership role in shaping the first-grade math curriculum using conquer math strategies and manipulatives. On a personal note, Ms. Daley is always smiling and willing to help in any way she can. I appreciate knowing that no matter what challenge comes her way, she remains student-centered and focused on figuring out a solution. She has a witty, endearing personality that truly shines, and I want you to know that you deserve all of these accolades, and please know how grateful I feel to have you at Irving. Please join me in congratulating Ms. Michelle Daley. Okay, next up. So, in every school throughout the nation, there are many people involved behind the scenes, really to make an educational experience a successful one for every student. It's not just one particular aspect of a school that makes a school run at all. And every day, children attend school in pursuit of an education that will help them be successful throughout their lives. Who attends to the special needs of our students? Who provides playground and/or lunchroom supervision in all the critical operational duties in the school district? It is the paraprofessionals that fill all of these roles and so many more. The paraprofessionals are educational support that provide key services to meet all the needs of our school-age learners at Irving Primary. As a parent of two Irving alumni, Ms. Cheryl Magaziner emulates every trait needed and necessary to support children and her peers. She loves and appreciates Irving and wants the best for every child in her care. It is no wonder that she is being recognized as our Educational Services Provider of the Year at Irving. In the morning hours, Ms. Magaziner can be seen working tirelessly on the car line, greeting families and the students with a smile. Rain, sleet, snow, she's out there. She is always willing to help. She is flexible whenever she is needed to cover classes or help all day as a one-to-one para. It never matters, she steps right in and gets right to work. She offers suggestions whenever she sees a need for improvement, such as getting the lunchbox bins to cut down on forgotten items on the playground. She is extremely giving and is willing to help out or champion a colleague. It was noted on one of her nomination forums how attentive she is to the needs of students. The teacher went on to say that when they first started working together, Ms. Magaziner would ask a lot of questions so that she understood how she could reinforce and support what was being taught in the classroom. Now she knows how to break down tasks into smaller steps and will try different strategies to make sure that those students having difficulty are successful. She is overheard encouraging students all the time and saying, "I knew you could do it." I personally am especially thankful and grateful for Ms. Magaziner's understanding of how kids learn and her ability to really make Irving a myriad of different learning opportunities, remaining inclusive and protective over our population of students that really need a little bit of extra attention or our support. She has worked with the Reform Church to make sure that students have what they need. Here at school, she always makes sure that the students have a lunch to eat and snack for the classroom. She is an advocate for those students in need, and when one of our students was not receiving a gift during Operation Snowflake, Ms. Magaziner contacted the Reform Church privately to donate gifts to the child. This is just a snapshot of how giving Ms. Magaziner is to our Irving students. In addition to being our Educational Services Professional of the Year, Ms. Magaziner constantly seeks to improve her skills and knowledge, which I truly admire about her. She is part of the District Professional Development Committee and works to set up, for the first time, professional development that is job-specific and relevant for the paraprofessionals. I personally really love hearing what her comments are about the professional development that we're offering to our paraprofessionals. She always has great ideas for what we could focus on. She volunteered for and is currently participating in the Rutgers Paraprofessional Coaching Program to help improve her ability to help students socially and academically. Ms. Magaziner also plays a very important role in our main office as she helps to register incoming students. I can always count on her for her attention to detail in making sure that there is no stone unturned. This honor is no surprise, Ms. Magaziner. You go above and beyond every day for the students and staff at Irving School, and I feel blessed to work alongside you each day.
A relation. So, I would like to say a couple of words about our Bartle honorees. Mr. Benjamin cannot make it tonight. Mr. Benjamin just had a baby about three to four weeks ago, so he is, he's being on daddy duty right now, so he's doing his thing. But I would like to call out, even though they're not here, two individuals. One is Mary Claremont. Some of us know Mary. Those of us in the bleachers from Bartle, of course, know Mary. Mary just had a baby yesterday.
Oh, wow.
So I said, "You know what? Take a day off tonight, be with the baby." But I do want to read the email she sent me. Here it is. So I have a beautiful picture of this baby, who is a nice, healthy, six pounds, 10 ounces, kind of long, 19 inches, 19 and 1/4 inches for me, that's long. I think my kids are like in the 17 range. The baby's name is James Bryant Claremont. And somehow, Ms. Claremont had the wherewithal to email me last night. I was a wreck. I was sobbing in the bosom of my mother-in-law on the night of my first night back, so I don't know how she did it. I'm very proud of her. I'd also like to call out the Educational Services Professional of the Year, who I don't believe is here, that's Radika, I'm going to try to pronounce her last name correctly, Belarus, Romanian. Radika is also a leader of our Support Staff and Teachers Association, HPEA. She's a wonderful addition to our organization. In fact, she's been helping us steer the Bartle Principal Search Committee since Mr. Benjamin will be leaving. I'm going to shift gears now and also stand in for Mrs. Semier, who, by the way, also has a baby, not an infant, and she's now on mommy duty because the baby has taken ill. So I am going to say a few words that she had prepared about the honorees who were here tonight. First of all, I have to take responsibility for Rebecca Ale. I think I hired Rebecca, so she was one of the first hires of my time here. Just, I can speak extemporaneously about Rebecca, and then I'm going to launch into a paragraph that Mrs. Semier shared with me. One of the, so I'm a middle schooler for a day every year, except this year I was a 9th grade student, said, and one year, maybe it was last year, I was in Rebecca's, two years ago, I must have made my mark, said, "Two years ago, Rebecca was my math teacher, and all I could remember," because when you're a student, you see it, you feel it from the inside out, "all I can remember is, I didn't, I wasn't bored, that's for sure. I really just had fun with math." Your focus is always on student-centeredness and constructive teaching, and I felt that as a student, so I really, really appreciate that. And you've also become an intricate member of the community, which I'm going to speak about now. As Mrs. Semier writes, "Rebecca Ale is a blessing to our school community. Her passion for reaching every child is apparent when you enter her classroom and when you see her in the halls. Her unique and thorough approach to teaching and motivating her students," which I felt, "makes them want to stay in her class year after year. She's aware and attuned to the needs of her students inside the class and out, developing nurturing and genuine relationships." And she's done that, by the way, as Mrs. Semier points out, by being very active in the student community as well. She's volunteered for the Girls on the Run. Did you run in Somerville? Okay, there was a run, Girls on the Run, Somerville. She motivates young ladies to be healthy and keep active, and she's also, I'm going to out you now, she's also, it's a secret identity, a member of the HPMS Social Emotional Prankster Group. And if you want to learn more about them, you can go to Twitter and follow them. They actually have their own Twitter account. So what they do is they go around the middle school, and sometimes they travel to the high school, and they pull pranks on teachers, but not like whoopee cushion pranks. It's more like putting Post-it notes of positive words and feedback about certain individuals all over their walls, covering things with happy birthday messages when it comes to somebody's birthday. As Mrs. Semier points out, they are clandestine, although not so much, and they leave the pranks throughout the district, spreading restorative practices and making students and staff smile. So it is with great pleasure that I'd like to have Rebecca come on up so I can present You see Stella and Andy? This is what you have to look forward to, you know, your main function, you take pictures. More than that. Okay, so next, I would like to recognize the Educational Service Professional of the Year, Fizina Brody. By the way, I can also speak extemporaneously about Fizina. I'm in the middle school a lot, and the one thing that I have to say, I've always taken away with when I interact with her is her smile, her positive attitude. It's, it just spreads, and it's very heartwarming to know that we have people who have a half-glass-full vibe like she does. But Mrs. Semier did write me notes, which I'd like to share with you all about Fizina. So Ms. Brody is the consummate professional, always smiling, I didn't read the notes ahead of time, and ready to assist in any endeavor that she's part of. Ms. Brody works miracles with some of our most challenging cherubs and instills a peace and grace into any situation she enters. She's been instrumental in the growth and success of the GLOW program, working collaboratively with staff to ensure each student is learning and growing. She's a pleasure to work with, I completely agree, and a light in our school. She shines bright. That's a wonderful way to capture Fizina's personality and attitude. So Fizina, can you please come up so I can take the award?[1470.41][1470.41](applause)
I'm really bad at taking pictures.
I think Zaiu's just refusing.
Thanks for being a sport, Avery. Appreciate it, really do.
Thank you, Avery. (inaudible).
Before I introduce Mr. Lassiter, I did see Radika walk in. So you're on the hook now. I'm so glad you're here. So when I first came to Bartle, where my office is situated, I really didn't know Radika well. I came to know her very quickly, because, first of all, you really are a leader, both a formal leader as an HPEA representative and liaison to all the other paraprofessionals, but also somebody on a more informal leadership level has earned the respect and the trust of her colleagues. You sit on just about every committee I have, including the Evaluation Committee, which, by the way, I think that's the first time we've had a committee, at least in my career, I've been a leader for 21 years, where we've actually had a support person, a paraprofessional in particular, sitting on an instrumental committee that involves evaluation of staff. You obviously, as I pointed out, are on the Steering Committee. We just started to meet today to work through the candidates for Bartle Principal. Radika and I also had a chance to hang out at a couple of evening functions, professional functions. They were, it was an opportunity for me to get to know you and your family, your children, and through that experience, I got to know who you are personally, warm, dedicated to kids, not just your own, but to everybody else. You were a one-to-one for a long time with one particular student, and I, being made aware that you have kept tabs on that student, I know the family has kept tabs on you because of the intimate relationship that you both developed speaks volumes about how much you care about our kids. So Radika, come on up. So at this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Lassiter to come to the podium, I'll recognize his Teacher of the Year and Support Professional of the Year.
I have the pleasure tonight of reading about a wonderful Teacher of the Year. I'm so happy that her family's here. I've watched them grow up over the years because they're always here, right along with her at many of the events that she's been at. And so I'd like to speak a little while about Susan Ducey, who was hired at the high school in 2002. And so she's been here a number of years and has worked tirelessly on behalf of our special education students and her colleagues at the high school and in the district ever since. She's not only a science department specialist for special education, and she has taught other subjects over the years, but she's become my go-to person when it comes to the sciences, and she's always willing to take on a new challenge. But she's also an expert when it comes to community building in her classroom and the school. And this year, I was, I was very pleased and excited that she spent at least two weeks, really, building the community in her classroom, which is something she's always done, but she had a real concerted approach to it this year. She also serves as a vice president in the HPEA and is an advocate for the rights of our students and district employees as well. Susan is a problem solver, and I am incredibly appreciative of her willingness to talk through any concern and work to a solution. any concern and work to a solution. Susan does not complain about problems, she helps fix them, which is incredibly valuable skill and very important in a high school. She's a co-advisor to the peer mediation program and is trained in restorative practices, and she uses this training and expertise regularly in her teaching and in her student advocacy efforts. She also volunteers regularly and supports our DECA trips, GLOW program efforts, senior class trips, and any other event she can schedule into her busy days. I stay late in the building often, but I believe that Susan may put in as much, if not more hours than me, working on modifying assignments, developing lesson plans, serving on multiple district and HPA committees, and supporting our students and teachers in so many ways. Her students thrive under her watch, and her classroom is always engaging. Susan was nominated by a colleague for the Teacher of the Year award this year, and this recognition is long overdue for such an invaluable educator at our high school. So I'd like to read from her colleague's nomination. I have truly never seen anyone as compassionate and caring toward the students as Susan. On multiple occasions, I have heard other teachers speak of various nuances of a situation. Susan is always the first, and sometimes only, one who consistently brings up the student's point of view and how the student feels in each situation. She is always willing to sacrifice something that is good for her if doing so will make things better for the students. Susan never refuses to do something because it is too difficult. She will put forth the necessary effort to make such a sure she succeeds. Her lessons are planned meticulously, and she is always completely prepared. Her years of dedication in Highland Park deserve to be acknowledged and rewarded with this honor of Teacher of the Year. So round of applause for Susan Ducey. So I'm going to share a few words about our Paraprofessional of the Year as well, our Educational Services Professional, Mr. Eric Davis. I have to just share with this. I recommended Eric Davis for hire in 2006, and he has been one of our most dedicated teacher associates at the high school ever since. As an alumnus of our school and the son of one of our beloved district teachers, Eric's commitment to HP is unmatched. He has served as a one-to-one paraprofessional in a special education shared pair for quite a number of students and teachers during his 13 years with us. I've had the pleasure of supervising him during all but two of those years when I was middle school principal. Eric has always been another set of eyes for me and the teachers he has supported. He has never limited himself to what he is told to do or to a single student's needs. He has always been proactive in identifying concerns and has gone so far as to suggest better and more efficient uses of his time in class placements. That's a rare thing for someone to really, please, I'm not being used well here, please put me over there, I see a problem and I'd like to fix it. Teachers will literally jump at the chance to have him assigned to provide classroom support in large in-class resource situations because Eric will help bring out the best in all the students in the room. He is seen as a teacher in the classes he supports regardless of his certification. Eric also coached track for many of his years with us, and I was ecstatic when I convinced him to coach one more year this season. Having set some records as a student at HPHS, Coach Davis brought it full circle when some of our athletes set records themselves this year with his support and guidance. Unfortunately, all this coaching cuts into Eric's personal training, and I have not seen him running around town as often as I used to. He may actually be out there running right now. I wish he was in the shape he is, for sure. Eric was nominated for this award by two of our teachers, and it's an award and recognition that is well-deserved by such a great man and role model for our students. So a round of applause in this.
Thank you. So what I'd like to do now is have us, before we recognize the students who are here and their families, we would like to recognize some special people who are leaving the school district. I'm not going to say leaving us because they're moving on to something else, but they're leaving the school district, they're retirees. So Principal McNally, if you wouldn't mind coming back to the podium to talk about some of your folks, I'd appreciate it. Irving has a few paraprofessionals and a certain nurse who will be retiring this year.
Okay, I will start with Ms. DiAgostino. So when you think of the school community, especially at the primary level, and how much support and guidance the little ones need, Ms. Myra DiAgostino, Ms. D to the kids, well, and us adults too, I guess, should be the poster of advocating tirelessly working and putting kids first. In my short time as Myra's principal, I have come to know a witty, passionate, and super-strong woman who I will greatly miss. October 1983 was a magnificent year for Ms. D as she started her paraprofessional career. She never really chose this profession, however, rather it came to her when she least expected it. I mean, let's face it, working with the little ones sounds much more fun than accounting. I vividly remember my first meeting of Ms. D. I had just started my position, and she came to me saying, "We really need to improve this car line and have accountability." While I wasn't really sure what she meant at the time, watching her out there like a well-oiled machine on the car line each morning, her concerns were valid, and we worked together to improve efficacy. I will always remember Ms. D for her desire to improve the school, for not just the students, but the staff. Our wall of staff, that was Ms. D's vision and project. If a day went by without my friendly reminder of missing personalized frames, I would get very nervous, or I would kind of run the other way, I'm like, "She's coming, she's coming to get me." I stayed for hours one night constructing that wall just to see the smile on her face, the same one she put on mine. She values community, and I know it was her biggest goal to turn most of our school grounds into a parking lot, even though it never happened. Ms. D is also known for the really good deal she gets on bagels. Friday mornings, rain, sleet, or snow, Ms. D would show up with those warm bagels in hand. Again, she values togetherness, and the Friday bagel breakfasts are her slice of heaven. In the classroom, she makes sure all the kids are clean. She takes much pride in kids making progress and loves doing the letter and number assessments in her current preschool setting. I know I haven't had the pleasure and opportunity of working with Ms. D for 36 years, but in the time I have, she has been nothing short of supportive, understanding, and making life look easy, even when it's not. You have made a huge impact on all the students you have served and have left shoes that are extremely hard to fill. We will continue to work on getting music set up on the car line, and I will leave all the 74 photo frames hanging, otherwise I would be hiding when you come to visit. This is not goodbye, but happy retirement. You deserve this time, and I know you will be coming to visit and check in on things. So congratulations, Ms. D, for many, many years in Highland Park.
It's so wonderful that you've come out to support the people who affected you in your lives, so thank you. Shout out to the folks out there who are here for support. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
My next retirement, this is also a big one. Ms. Leifer. So if you think school nursing is all about flu shots, Band-Aids, and record-keeping, you haven't been inside a school lately. A typical schedule can encompass immunizations, healthcare screenings, hearing and vision testing, dealing with home accidents, diseases such as diabetes and asthma, special needs like tube feeding, preventing the spread of disease through blood exposure, and effects of neglect in childhood trauma, just to name a few. For some students, the school nurse is the only healthcare professional they ever see. For a nurse, their work is not only confined to the nurse's office, they must also interact daily with professionals such as teachers, doctors, child study teams, administrators, school counselors, coaches, parents, police officers, et cetera, et cetera. Ms. Cheryl Leifer has been the glue holding Irving together for the past 25 years. She holds so many hats for our youngest learners and has been a never-ending support person for our staff over the years. Ms. Leifer, and I can hear her telling the story in her Cheryl voice, said that it wasn't the easiest road getting a job here in Highland Park. It was also far from her house. She interviewed, and the administrators forgot to call her and tell her that she got the job. Ms. Leifer called to follow up about the job because that's what she does, she is all about follow-up, and Maggie Crows was a bit dismayed and said, "What? They never called you?" She was later called and told she needed to come in that day to sign a contract and complete her paperwork. Since that day, she has excitedly worked for seven principals, and I wonder who was her favorite? Ms. Leifer's desire to help others is what makes her who she is. She doesn't know any other way and never will. In my short time working with her, she advocates for the medical needs and requirements for students. She cares deeply about the well-being of the students and the staff equally. Ms. Leifer will never let the basket in her office be empty of chocolate. Her motto was, "Well, we all work hard and need a chocolate break." Ms. Leifer is kind with families and really takes the time to educate parents about health-related topics. During the holiday months, Ms. Leifer ran our Operation Snowflake. Needy families or children in our school received gifts, and she spoke with the families to gather information about the needs of their kids. She also collected and ran food drives, again, student and family-centered, always. Perhaps the thing I admire most about Ms. Leifer is the individual approach she takes to her nursing career. Each student is treated as such and has different needs. Every time I go into that office, there should be five to seven kids there, and they all, whether it's a Band-Aid, an ice pack, they need to sleep, they need a snack, whatever the case may be, Ms. Leifer can handle it. She knows how to work with the kids, and I really, truly admire what you do every single day. There is not one Band-Aid approach to nursing, and Ms. Leifer has helped me so much in understanding immunizations and record-keeping. I have come to know a person who is warm, kind, and student-centered. No one can really fill your shoes of expertise and dedication, but we will sure try. I know a golf course is calling your name, as is a new grandbaby. Jerry, her husband, he will relish in your shopping habits, so you might have to come back and sub. So we will be waiting for you with open arms, only if you bring the baby. You rock retirement, and Irving is so appreciative of your years of putting students first. Congratulations, come on up.
handle my old frequent flyers. I think Sarah was a frequent flyer with you too, Ms. Toy. I have two kids here who went through the school system. I remember, I would like to now say a few words about this toy. He was a retiree this year who was at Bartle School, who I also had to get to know as a parent, besides being a superintendent. I'll never forget when I would get a call from this toy, I think I was a high school principal at the time, and you probably called me as opposed to my wife who's a teacher because you figured I'd sit behind a desk and I can pick up a call whenever. Whenever my frequent flyer, Sarah, would come to you, she's going to kill me for being on video about this, but whenever she would come to you, whether it was pathological or it was real, you would call and you would keep a steady voice and keep it all together and just say simply, "Mr. Taylor," at the time I was Mr. Taylor, "just like you to know, Sarah's here," and I think she wants to go home right now. And I draw my eyes, of course, but you were always so highly professional and so accommodating and so warm. I think you just got it. You're also very humble, and I can sense that it might be difficult for you sometimes to hear all the good stuff that you've done for our children because that was never your style. You were quiet, you did your thing, and you did it really well, and you did it with such support and care that you were behind the scenes, kind of running the whole show. Big shoes to fill, we do have somebody who's going to be filling those shoes, but it's going to take a long time to figure out how to make that nurse's office her own because you've been part of the Bartle community for so many years. By the way, Nurse Toy's seen quite a few principals, quite a few superintendents, and she's weathered everything. And was also instrumental, I should add, as was Radika and some of the other Bartle veterans, in starting the EPIC program, which is a service organization started and run by our teachers, sponsored by the HPEA, to give back to our kids and parents and families. So Ms. Toy, I would like you to come up now so I can present you a wonderful plaque and certificate on behalf of the school district. I don't see her. I'm not sure if she's here, she's one of our other retirees. And Ms. Pacora will be retiring as well. Ms. Pacora's shoes are going to be tough to fill as well. She was a big part of the management of our schedule and whatnot. I would now like to shift gears and talk about a special math teacher who also worked with at least one of my students, one of my children, call them students, but they're my own, Sarah. my own, Sarah. And I have fond memories of my experiences as both a parent, who had an opportunity to work with you back-to-school night, parent conferences, and as a superintendent. So Mr. Gunn is retiring after many, many years as a fixture on the second floor for most of your career, correct? I think you were on that second floor. We've switched. You've seen a lot yourself. I've gone through principals of your own and also have always been there to hold everything together. You have adapted so beautifully to the changing whims of education. As you know, I don't have to tell you, you can tell me a few things about how things work in our field. It's like cycles. They keep going. You've probably heard the same thing, but just rebranded in a different way, different style, yet you've adapted, you've modified, and you've come through it all to serve a lot of our highest achievers, those kids who really need to challenge. One thing that people might not be aware of is how difficult it is to replace somebody like Mr. Gunn. Mr. Gunn has certifications that provide for the accelerated track that has some of our sixth graders. I'm sure you've had some sixth graders take geometry in your class, a predominance of seventh and eighth graders, but some sixth graders. So that's going to be a very tough position for us to fill. You're a tough personality for us to replace, and I am so grateful that you came out, because you deserve to be recognized tonight. So please, come up and let me hand you a beautiful plaque on behalf of the school district. And last but not least, I'd like to bring Mr. Lassiter back up so he can talk about a few of those who are retiring from the high school.
Having been in the district for 25 years, all the retirees that I just saw, I could actually speak about almost all of them myself. I know the Irving retirees from working in summer programs. I know them very well from all the work that they did with the kids in the summer. Ms. Toy actually brought me to school when I had rotator cuff surgery. She lived in Monroe, so she brought me to school. Mr. Gunn, I could speak for quite a while, because we were not only colleagues as co-teachers in eighth grade and working interdisciplinary on all kinds of projects, but I was also had the unique fortune of being his supervisor as well. And so I know how big his shoes actually are to fill. But I am here to talk about someone whose sneakers actually are very hard to fill, and that is Barbara Schmon. Yeah, and see, you hear the sigh, because everyone knows Ms. Schmon, okay? She came to Highland Park Public Schools in 1978. Now, don't do the math, we'll leave that up to Mr. Gunn, but that response lets us know. She's faithfully served this district and every school in the district during the 41 years she has been with us. When I entered the district in 1994, she was teaching at Bartle School and implementing the Social Decision Lab, instilling good character and calmness strategies in each of our district's elementary-age students. We could see the impact of this in our students as they came to the middle school and eventually the high school. The phrase "listening positions" and the calming strategies she taught students were evident to those of us who were able to tap into this foundation she helped establish. Barb gave support to the Bartle principal and the role she performed, but in reality, she did the work not only of a physical education teacher, but also an assistant principal in many regards, and without the title or the recognition. I know she helped with scheduling and the other quasi-administrative responsibilities she did, and I also know her advice went a long way. As an early administrator, I knew that she was someone that really was very wise. When she was reassigned to the high school five years ago, she was at first a little concerned. We spoke about the challenges she would face, and I worked out a schedule where she would be teaching freshmen and juniors. To say that I have been pleased with the results would be an understatement. Barb has been instrumental in revamping a lot of what we do at the high school. She brought in archery, which she takes care of right down to the very quills on the arrows and the arrowheads, to make sure that it lasts, and I've had plenty of practice out there myself. She assisted in establishing personal health and fitness course and actually leads the kids in yoga every morning. I still haven't gotten out there. To be honest, I just don't want to embarrass myself. Because she's also helped to create a viable Option Two program for our three-sport athletes, and she sets the bar high for our students. It's not gym class with her, it is absolutely physical education and health. I often heard her juniors say that the research project they did for her class was one of the most challenging research papers they did in all of high school. Students took her classes seriously and showed her the utmost respect, and they still do. A freshman who was in a bit of trouble recently told me just the other day that he would never act up in her class because he respected her too much. In fact, she met him at the door of the office, pulled him aside, yeah, she's nodding her head, she knows exactly who I'm talking about, and he said just that. I've been incredibly fortunate to work with Barb and truly love the example of a consummate professional and dedicated educator she has set for all those who have had the pleasure of calling her a colleague and a friend. I wish her the sweetest of retirements that she so richly deserves, and I hope she has the opportunity to get out there on that back nine, because we all know Barb's going to stay active and healthy and enjoy that retirement. Round of applause for Barbara Schmon.
I'm going to ask that you stay, so we're going to move right into students, but before we do, a couple of programming notes. Actually, before the programming notes, I want to let the cat out of the bag. Did you know that Ms. Schmon was on a Final Four? I think you went to the Final Four Rutgers basketball team back in the day, and you played for, was it Walens? Okay, there you go. Who was a legendary coach. And Ms. Schmon never talks about that. When I found out about that, we were writing health curriculum together, I flipped out and I started Googling you and everything, so. Gotcha. So, a programming note. It's 8:30. I would ask that those who are honored already just hang in there a few more minutes. We have some students we'd like to recognize, and then we're going to take a few minutes, because it's still my superintendent's report, President Simarusti, to have for freshmen, some cookies, some water, you can mingle a little bit, and then I'm going to kick everybody out unless you want to stay till 11 o'clock, except for the two new reps, and then we'll keep going. So with that, speaking of the reps, what I would like to do now is take the phone back from Avery, because I would like Zaiyu and Avery to come up to the podium so we can recognize you for all your efforts. So I'd like to say a few words about each of these students who I've come to know. Since I've been here for four years, you were ninth graders when I was here. Well, actually, no, Avery, you were here as a 10th grader, correct? Avery and I got to know each other thanks to some really important work we did on the Gender Identity Support Plan and Policy. You've been a leader since then in my eyes, and I know you're moving on to do activist work at the college level, so it was no surprise when you came here to be a student representative. Zaiyu, I didn't know you very well until you came onto the board. Little did I know you were brilliant, and by the way, I really appreciate, and warm too. I appreciated the hug on the stage when we honored Zaiyu as our salutatorian, that's number two in the class. So your hard work, your dedication, your commitment, it was obvious that you brought that to the board level, because you would come prepared with questions that were well-informed and then would do a lot of research afterwards, so your commitment was stellar. So I do have certificates for you, and we have a water bottle coffee mug, so you can bring it with you to college and forever remember your late nights here at the Board of Education meetings. So with that, I'm going to ask Ms. Coleman, because you're right here, if you wouldn't mind taking a picture of my fave student representatives. Okay, oh, is that you? You shaking over? Fantastic. Okay, so the first student we'd like to recognize is Andy Land. But to introduce, Andy, I'd like to first introduce a military man. Some people who walked in may have thought all of a sudden we started posting a Marine at the door. No, actually Sergeant Gary is here to represent the Marine Corps, to present Andy Land with a very special honor. So Sergeant Gary, if you could take the podium, please?
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here at Highland Park High School and on behalf of the United States Marine Corps. I'm very excited to honor Andy Land on his selection as a 2019 Semper Fidelis All-American. Andy, you face life battles with the conviction and determination to succeed. You embody the same fighting spirit that we as Marines stand for by taking on your own challenges and succeeding. Succeeding academically, athletically, and by making your community a better place. Just as the title of United States Marine is earned, never given, so is your title of Semper Fidelis All-American. As a celebration of your fighting spirit, you'll proudly represent your community at the Exclusive Battles One Academy in Washington, DC, this July, as one of the only 96 students selected from across the nation. You'll be given the opportunity to network with and hear from an elite circle of leaders from all walks of life, who fought and won battles in their own lives. Congratulations. You've turned obstacles into victories, and we look forward to continuing to honor your fighting spirit at the Battles One Academy this summer. Dr. Taylor, we know Andy couldn't do this alone. You've recognized his fighting spirit and pushed him to continued success. In celebration of the importance of building a support system and enabling the success of Andy and future generations, we invite you to the Battles One Academy alongside your student. We look forward to seeing you both again in July.
And I'm going to invite Mr. Lassiter back to the podium so he can announce other recognitions that we have here tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. And so we're going to start off with our National Merit Scholarship finalist. This is a kind of a grueling exercise that the students go through in testing and testing and testing and performing at the top levels. And so we have one National Merit Scholarship finalist this year, and that's Patrick Lynn. And the next few awards, I'm not going to read about. I'm going to actually invite up Ms. Turco, who's here tonight in place of Ms. Harper, who could not be here, to speak about our really excellent DECA program and the wonderful achievements that these students have made. So, Ms. Turco.
So every time we talk about DECA at the end of the year, it's always been said that this has been the best year yet, and this year is no different. Our DECA chapter held the first annual DECA Dash, raised money for Alex's Lemonade Stand and the Make-A-Wish Foundation, promoted the school store and play, taught financial literacy and entrepreneurship to special-needs students, and had all six of our chapter manuals qualified to international competition in Orlando, Florida. Though we have so many people we'd like to thank and recognize for these accomplishments, limiting it to just a few people was a really tough decision. We'd like to first start with Senior Mackenzie Volpert for her dedication and leadership in DECA. Mackenzie is this year's president and has had a large part of the success of this chapter for the past four years. Mackenzie has inspired students, taken underclassmen under her wing, qualified to states and internationals for role plays and manuals, and was awarded the New Jersey DECA State Scholarship this year. Though we will miss her tremendously, we wish her the best at Coastal Carolina in the fall, where she is creating a collegiate DECA program. This year, we are one out of six schools in the state of New Jersey internationally recognized as a school-based enterprise. This is thanks to Larkin, Rachel, and Rowan. They are international finalists at the International DECA Competition for their 20-page manual and presentation of the Owl School Store in the Learn and Earn Project. Their hard work and diligence in maintaining the school store is quite an accomplishment in itself, but being on the international stage was icing on the cake. Luckily, Rachel and Rowan will be back as seniors and part of the DECA Executive Board. However, Larkin will be graduating, and we wish him the best at Rutgers Business School.
For the next two awards, having to do with our Model Congress and our Mock Trial, I'd like to welcome up their advisor, Mr. Adam Gold.
Okay, so the first award is for our Model Congress Club. We actually have a combined Model UN and Model Congress Club. And this year, we really had a special year thanks to a great, great group of students. Not only did we do well at our Model UN program at Rutgers in the fall, we also traveled to Mexico City again and had a number of individual award winners and earned a grant. We also ran a conference just a couple of weeks ago and raised over $5,000 for financial aid. But probably our biggest success for the year was winning Outstanding Delegation. That award was at the Rutgers Model Congress Competition. And one thing that's special about the school for quite a long time, since Mr. Lassiter was actually the advisor of the Model UN program, is that our school, even though it's a small school, we compete against large schools because we bring such a large group. Like the DECA program, both clubs are so large as compared to the size of our school. And I think that that makes it really special. So we've competed against West Windsor and Monroe and East Brunswick and Franklin. And this year, our Model Congress Group was able to win Outstanding Delegation with 18 individual awards out of the 45 students that attended. And so I wanted to invite two of our outstanding officers to come accept an award on behalf of the team. That would be Avery Haley Locke and Katie Volpert. If you can both come up. Okay. Our next award is also for team. It's for our Mock Trial team, but we wanted to give special recognition to the captain of this team, and that again is Katie Volpert, who is the captain of our Mock Trial team. Just a little bit of info about our Mock Trial team. We're a 10-person team, and we compete, again, against some pretty large schools throughout the state. We all work on the same trial. There are about 20 teams in Middlesex County alone that compete, and we made it further than we've ever made it before. And that's in large part due to the leadership of Katie. We had a number of great members, including Zaiyu, as well as an outstanding lawyer. Katie, in particular, as a captain, was a leader, and a leader as a junior member of the team, organizing meetings, keeping everyone on task, and enabling us to compete at a really high level against, again, some pretty large schools who have thousands of students to choose from. So these students actually go to Middlesex County Courthouse, and they compete in front of real lawyers and judges, and they act as representatives of either the plaintiff or the defense. And this year, we made it all the way to county finals for the first time in our school's history. And so invite Katie up to accept the award on behalf of the Mock Trial.
And the last award that we'll be giving out tonight is for our Outstanding Mediator. And so I want to welcome back up Ms. Ducey, who is actually the co-coordinator of the peer mediation program.
I've been doing peer mediation for, I think it's 13 years now, and we've never actually given out an award before. But once I read to you a little bit about Rizny, you'll understand why Ms. Powell and I couldn't pass up this opportunity to recognize him. Tonight's recognition of Rizny Idris is for his outstanding participation this year as a member of peer mediation. Rizny has embodied all the principles of an excellent mediator. The peer mediator's job is not to solve problems for other students, but to help other students think of ways to solve problems for themselves. Mediators are trained to be good listeners, effective communicators, and to serve their community for the greater good. Many of these skills that the mediators are trained for overlap and align to restorative practices that is being implemented here at the high school. The process used during mediations allows students to diffuse conflicts amongst their peers and eliminate possible further threats to student safety. Rizny has been a leader and a positive role model for his peers in peer mediation and beyond. He has volunteered to be involved in all aspects of the club with great pride and enthusiasm. His mediation skills and openness to help others has been witnessed during mediations throughout the school year. Peer mediation is a quiet club that helps students with clear confidentiality to protect all involved, which leads to little or no recognition. Rizny, as well as many other mediators, served the school quickly and efficiently, keeping the peace throughout Highland Park High School and teaching others peacefully to work through their conflicts. Rizny truly is a person of service. He thinks of how he can contribute and serve others and look for ways to best accomplish that task. For us, watching Rizny grow and serve others has been very rewarding. Taking the time to honor him tonight is something that both Ms. Powell and I are so very proud to do. Congratulations, Rizny, and we wish you nothing but love, happiness, and success for your future.
I also want to point that Rizny was one of our sources of strength, students who conducted a workshop for about 100 educators from around the tri-state region. Their workshop was by far the most, one of the most popular, I think if not the most popular of all the 15 workshops that we ran for Ed Camp. So shout out to him for that as well. So at this time, I'd like to wrap up this portion of my report. Let's take a few minutes to say goodbye, but also grab some cookies and some water on the way out. If you don't, they're going to go to waste. And then we'll resume my report very briefly with a quick shout-out that I'd like to give to the Educational Foundation. Thank you, those of you who came out tonight to honor each other. So I do want to give a shout-out to the Highland Park Educational Foundation, a couple of members of whom are present tonight. I'm going to introduce Kathy Denning, who's the head of the organization. But before I do that, one of the reasons why the Educational Foundation is so important is because they have, for at least as many years as I've been here as superintendent, funded a rite-of-passage trip that our fifth graders take, the Camp Bernie trip. I don't know if the foundation funded it back in the day, but when my girls, my oldest one who's in college now, was in fifth grade, she went to Camp Bernie. So I thought I'd share a couple of pictures with you and read some testimony from Nicole Stahl, one of the teachers who went on the trip. She writes, and by the way, these are all pictures of our kids and the teachers and the support personnel and parents, parents and guardians, who came to chaperone the trip. Ms. Stahl writes that another successful trip was had, this was actually her 15th year attending the camp. And as usual, it was amazing to see how the kids were thriving during outdoor adventures. The weather was perfect. I understand this year, it hadn't rained, so there wasn't a lot of mud, and it was clear skies for the days that they were there. A lot of the magic from the camp comes from watching the kids do things for the very first time, like I'm sure this was for many of our students, rock climbing. Ms. Stahl also writes that, including rock climbing, for some, archery was a first. Believe it or not, eating a meal family-style was a first for some. The kids do debrief their experiences with their teachers, so this is how the teachers come to understand, learn what the kids took away. For many, it was also canoeing. Whatever the case is, writes Ms. Stahl, Camp Bernie allows everyone to experience adventures while they're with their friends. And kids who they might not get to interact with, because the camp activities do compel the kids to mingle with other students with whom they might not have an opportunity to do, so with or just might not feel compelled to do. So this is an opportunity for the kids to interact with their current friends, old friends, and make new friends. And the fifth grade is extremely appreciative of the foundation's support of the trip. What I'll end with before I introduce Ms. Denning is what Ms. Stahl says was a highlight. So this, for her, was the first time she was able to climb the Rock Tower, and she did it next to one of our students who had some special needs, needed a little extra support, but the student took the risk, and Ms. Stahl said that she was there to help motivate, and apparently it took quite a bit of time to get the student to get up to the top of that climb. Yet Ms. Stahl did a lot of coaxing and verbal supporting. So she said it took a while, but she finally got the student to get to the top. So that's really what Camp Bernie is about. I don't think some of us had visual of what actually goes on. So Kathy, could you come to the podium and say a few words? Kathy is the head of the organization. Rob Magaziner is the board representative to the foundation, and we have meetings monthly, usually on Tuesday nights.
Hi. I love seeing those Camp Bernie pictures and hearing about their trip. I've been doing this for 10 years, and I still love seeing those pictures every single time. Thank you, Board, for having me tonight to say a few words about HPEF. My name is Kathy Denning. I'm the chair of the Highland Park Educational Foundation, or we call it HPEF. Many of you already know about HPEF, but if you don't, here's a little background. HPEF was formed in 1996, and to date, we've awarded over 400 grants and totaling more than $600,000. Our sole mission is to raise funds for teacher-initiated grants. Teachers and their staff let us know about a need or an idea that they have for enhancing their students' classrooms or educational experiences. We feel that teachers and staff know best what they need, so we leave it to the teachers and the staff to tell us what we should fund. And HPEF grants are for all grades, from pre-K to 12, and at all learning levels. Some of our recent grants include, as you saw, funding Camp Bernie. And what we basically do there is we support the families that can't afford the fees, and then we try to reduce the fees somewhat, as much as we can, for every other family. So it's not a big burden for people to go. Along with the Claire Berkowitz Fund, we help fund Diversity Day at the middle school, iPads and related equipment for ESL students at the high school, a trip to Turtleback Zoo for special education students. I guess you guys are getting the idea. It's kind of all over the place. Funds to help make the courtyard at the high school into a makerspace, the robotics club at Bartle, Students in Action, which is a leadership program at the middle school that engages students in community service projects, and we support Model UN, DECA, and the robotics club at the high school. And this year, we were really happy to partner with the district for a special project, funding the new STEAM lab at the middle school with a grant of $20,000. A STEAM lab at the middle school will help our students foster interest in these fields and take full advantage of all the STEAM projects at the high school. So, sounds great, right? So the one thing is, we could definitely use your help. HPEF has no corporate sponsors or large donors. All of our funds are raised right here in Highland Park from people and businesses in our community. Please take a look at our website. It's, wait, I have it right here. Here it is. HPEFNJ.org. And see what you think. If you like what you see, any donation of any amount is always welcome, and you can always look for us on Facebook as well. And one last note, we are actively looking for people on our board, especially parents with kids in Irving and Bartle. The time commitment is a monthly meeting and some additional hours that can be done as fits into your schedule. And we don't require board members to make financial contributions. What we're really looking for are people who have a passion for improving our kids' education and enjoy seeing these projects come to life. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Kathy. And that concludes my report.
Thank you so much, Kathy, and thank you, Kathy and Lisa, for coming out tonight and for everything that you guys do and for all of the different things that you guys help fund that we can't. We really greatly appreciate it. Okay, so we should be moving on to our board committee reports, but it is after nine o'clock. I think some folks have come out here for public comment. It's getting really late. If we go through our board reports, it's going to be even later. So with everyone's permission, I would like to move, change item 13 from our board committee reports to public comment, and we will just switch items 13 and 14 on the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so let's do that. So we'll open up the podium right now for public comment. The Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved this time for your comments. If anybody would like to make any comments, please come up to the podium. You can state your name, please, and if you're a resident, your address for the board secretary so that she can record it. There's also a sign-in sheet there. Or if you're staff, you can say staff; if you're a student, you can say you're student.
Hi. My name is June Miller, and I'm a teacher at the high school. I am very proud to say that I have worked for the Highland Park School District for the last 15 years. I think this is a wonderful district and a wonderful place to work. When I tell my friends and family outside of Highland Park that I like where I work, they often say, "Are you telling me there aren't problems there?" My response to that is, "Every place has problems." However, in so many places, the problem's a cause because no one cares. In Highland Park, the problem's a cause because we all care so very much.
That's brilliant.
I'm speaking because my name and the GLOW program, which my name is associated with, have come up at a few board meetings. I've also heard that letters were sent, and people who I did not speak to have been speaking about the program. So I wanted everyone to see the face behind the name, and I also want to clarify some things that only I could know. At a previous board meeting, it was said that the GLOW program is one of the most successful programs in the district. To that, I want to say thank you, because I played a large part in starting it, and I implement the high school component daily. Of course, I did not do this alone, and I do want to thank Dr. Taylor, Mrs. Boudin, Mr. Lassiter, and especially Mrs. Deacher, who played a large part in the original design of the program. They gave me support and were always available to listen and help with any problems I had, as well as occasionally performing magic and somehow managing to find money for initiatives I knew would be beneficial. I want to give you some background of my 15 years at Highland Park, because it will help you understand the reasons for the decisions made. I have started several successful programs. First, I started a special education Spanish program. When the need for that program decreased, I was asked to start a behavioral program. As student needs changed, the behavioral program was slowly transitioned to what is now the GLOW community-based instruction program. This program is different from any other program because it doesn't take place solely in the classroom. It has several components, but a big part of this program is the Structured Learning Experience, SLE, which is only for students age 16 and up. Part of my job is being the SLE teacher. Briefly, what I do is find businesses, make contact with businesses both in and out of Highland Park, find out what skills the students can learn there, excuse me, see if the placement fits with our school's schedule, assign job coaches, and make sure the students go to a business appropriate for their skill set. Additionally, I need to work with the school staff to make sure attendance is correct, instruct the job coaches, work with related service people, and more. Yes, there was a learning curve to figure out how to do all of this. Out of everything I have done in my entire teaching career, I am most proud of my work with GLOW. It isn't a job for me, it's a passion. It isn't a job for me, it's a passion. Just ask the custodians. I am in this building by 6:00 a.m. daily, and I have been here as late as 7:00 at night. I work weekends and summers after my summer hours have run out, and I am not complaining. I have found 29 businesses to date, which is more than some of the bigger districts such as Woodbridge. Employers are so happy with us that many contact me to see if I have a student for them, and I've convinced many to say yes to taking a student after they've initially said no. Based on this, it's obvious why I was asked to leave the high school and go to the middle school. It appeared the high school program was up and running with two teachers co-teaching. It made sense to ask the teacher experienced in starting new programs to restart another program and leave the other teacher running what was already in place. However, what no one who isn't there daily could possibly know is that we do not co-teach. We come together occasionally for events we have invited administrators to attend. Dr. Taylor is seriously one of the most involved superintendents I have ever worked with. He has come to, if not all, the majority of these combined events. Additionally, Genesis shows that we teach in the same room. Therefore, anyone who is not in the room daily would not know that the other teacher takes her students to a different room each day, except for the few times a year when we have joined together to do events, we have separate lesson plans, and don't know what the other is doing. Since the SLE is only done with the students I have in my room, there has never been a reason for us to talk about it. When I was told I was going to the middle school, I immediately started going there almost daily, met my future students, and learned my schedule. I spoke to administration about the needs of the middle school students. That's when I saw the middle school needs versus the high school needs as only someone who is with the students daily could see. The needs of the middle school students are not as significant as those in the high school, and most of those students do not need a self-contained program. The high school program is currently at a very critical level. We are going to have the largest 18- to 21-year-old, also known as 12-plus program ever, with students with significant needs. The 12-plus program is for students who have met their graduation requirements but have not met all their goals. Special education students are eligible to stay in school until age 21. This program's emphasis is on SLE, one of my strengths. Some of these students have autism and have difficulty with change. The change in the program from the traditional high school program to the 12-plus program is huge. Losing a teacher they are comfortable with, who knows their needs, what job placements are appropriate for them, and what types of employers would work well with them would definitely hurt the transition. It is so normal that when a process is implemented, unexpected things come up. This reminds me of a home renovation. Someone decides to redo their kitchen. They research on their own, pick out appliances, get a ballpark amount about how much it would cost, et cetera. However, once the contractor comes in and examines the kitchen, they find out an electrical system has to be upgraded, the subfloor needs to be replaced, the water tank isn't big enough, et cetera. By the time the expert is done, you realize the problems outweigh the benefits. I think that's what's happening here. The motivation in sending me to bring back GLOW Junior was sincere. However, everyone thought everything was covered. However, now the details are surfacing. Budget has been a huge conversation. In order for me to go to the middle school, another teacher has to take SLE certifications at a cost of $932, plus five of these classes, five of these, five days of these classes need to be taken in the summer, and for the next part, I am not positive about. But I think contractually, someone has to be paid to do that in the summer, and that could be another $900. Again, I'm not positive about that part. Also, the SLE classes do not teach how to implement SLE, they only teach the legal requirements. I am already successfully doing this. Anytime someone takes a new job, it means a few steps backwards. I may have all the CBI experience, but I am not a middle school teacher. I can't just jump in and start a CBI program. I need to learn the attention span, community experience, academic levels, et cetera, of the middle school students. Yes, I can do this, but why do two programs have to take a step back? Because no matter how wonderful and talented a replacement for the SLE program will be, it will still require a learning curve. Each year, I have taught the GLOW program. I have brought it to higher levels. To summarize, I've implemented town trips, math and English lessons in the community, school-based jobs, started the CBI Irving and Bartle School Programs, attended CBI workshops to meet with teachers from other parts of the state to share knowledge, received my SLE certification, arranged for free travel training from NJ TIP, found every one of our 29 SLE placements, initiated our involvement and dared a dream, a full-day workshop run by and for special needs students, started the 12-plus program, created SLE rating sheets, learned how to work with job coaches, got five students' paid jobs, and so much more. This year, one of our 12-plus students was a winner of the Rebecca S. McDonald Award, an award given to the most successful students in the state who are graduating from a transition program. People in the state know me, and I know who to call with questions. People also reach out to me. When the budget from the free travel training program from NJ TIP was cut, they called to tell me to apply early so we could get in. In their words, they would hate to not be able to work with Highland Park. I've been planning for next year's 12-plus program all year. I've had these students for all four years. Their families feel comfortable with me, and I know their needs. It was truly crushing to me when I was told I was going to have to leave. So badly, I want to continue to improve this program, maybe make it a model for the state. However, even though I was told I was going to the middle school on April 30th, I did not question the transfer until the very end of May, when I was sure, as only someone who is implementing the program daily can be, that there were facts that needed to be shared in the best interest of the students. I know and have experience with all components of a community-based instruction program. The only place where all the components are part of the program is the high school. Thank you so very much to the Board of Education and the administration, who I know have taken a tremendous amount of time trying to make what's right, the best decisions for the district as a whole. I do promise to do the absolute best job I am capable of doing, no matter where and what I am teaching in September. However, I am capable of my best work in the high school GLOW CBI SLE program that I have created and improved each year. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Miller. We really appreciate the additional information and to help flesh it out, and the way that you're approaching giving the board the information that you're giving us. So thank you very much. And I couldn't agree more with the problems arising because people care too much. I think that was beautifully stated. Thank you very much. If anybody else would like to give public comment, please come on up to the podium.
I might get a little...
No worries. If you could just state your name for the records for the board secretary, I'd appreciate it, and make sure you write it down there on the paper as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
My name is Roxana Marcone. I live in 1023 Central Avenue, Highland Park. I'm here because my daughter is part of the program. And I don't want, she's one of the seniors that will be here until 21. And listening to Ms. Miller, I don't know what else to say, just to say that I don't want, I don't think this is the time for my daughter to have a change on this program. She needs, she knows the teacher. Ms. Miller knows a lot about these kids. We are concerned about not continuing with her with the Highland, with the 9- to 12-plus GLOW program. She's already an experienced teacher in this, a certified teacher. She has the ability to connect with my daughter and all the other students and her class, in her class. She does have the passion, the dedication, and the care that this group of kids need. Ms. Miller goes beyond expectations when it's time to look for job placements. She has the experience on how to deal with the business owners. She knows how to find the best placement, as well as she is an excellent, she's excellent with consulting and advising those businesses and those placements on how to work with our kids. We are worried about how these plans will be able to come to fruition without Mrs. Miller, and that we will get off track and not be able to meet the goals that we have set for the upcoming year. I think they need to stay with Ms. Miller, as they are in the transition phase into 12-plus or transitioning out-of-school system. It is too late to bring a new person, and probably she's, she or he is going to need to be trained and certified, and when we have already somebody that has all this. So I don't know.
Thank you very much. It'll be on the next agenda, but I do just want to say we have had outreach from other parents as well, so we definitely appreciate the feedback.
Jorge Marcone, also from 1023 Central Avenue. And first of all, I want to confirm that in every way that Ms. Miller has described his job, I think it's not only us, but all the other parents do agree that that's a very accurate description of everything that she's doing. And so, in addition to our plea for keeping her in the high school, effectively, the plus, the 12-plus is getting into a crucial moment of the program, it seems to me that getting somebody else to do the job requires a transition, a longer transition than what we have available right now. There is a lot of, there is the issue of certification, first of all. So somebody that will take up this job and have to deal with the issue of certification, plus learning the new job, and we all know that the learning curve usually demands twice or three times the amount of time for the job when you're, when you're learning it. Plus, apparently, this new person will have, will continue with the responsibilities that he or she is currently taking. So it seems a little bit abrupt, this kind of transition, and I'm not sure that we are, that we are ready and for that. As my wife mentioned, we are already behind. There are certain decisions that were made when we were doing the individualized educational plans, and some preparations need to be done or should have been done already in order to have everything going on in next year. So that's basically it. In addition to, we hope we can keep Ms. Miller in the high school program. Besides that issue, I think we have a problem with transition. The problem is not going to run that smooth next year, because it requires more training and experience before it can be run at the level in which it has been running so far. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you both for coming out. Thank all three of you for coming out. Good evening.
Let me introduce myself. I'm Dimitri Grigorov. I'm father of Victor Grigorov. He will enroll in 12-plus this year. And I have a couple notes. However, after such emotional and passionate defense from Frankie's parents, I just want to add a couple of things without bothering you and putting you to sleep tonight. It's getting late.
You will not fall asleep, I promise you.
I will speak directly for Victor. Victor is part of a class who goes as a group. If it wasn't for Victor's sister on Thursday, he will walk along the red carpet. As much as we want to implement our children into the society, they're different. And I have 18 years old at home with a soul of seven, eight years old. So I don't know how many of the board members are parents of special needs child. But before any decision be made regarding the future of the class, the program, which is outstanding, Victor is lucky to be in this program with Ms. Miller. I want to just thank every teacher who worked from this district. I reside at 21 Red Cliff Avenue. I'm here in 21 years. My daughter grew up through Highland Park High School. She graduated Brandeis University. Now Victor is through Highland Park system, school system, and he's excellent, outstanding. We don't fix cars unless they get broken. Why we do that now, I don't understand. Now, one thing, Victor is going three, four times a week to Children's Specialized Mountainside, Tom's River, New Brunswick, Hamilton. I'm driving across the state, every program that is available. For all these years, Victor was prepared, starting with Ms. Rachel Alterman, then Ms. April Koch, then was Ms. Pacora, then Ms. Kozlovsky, and then came Ms. Miller. Victor was ready. 9, 10, 11, 12 grade, he was ready to advance. He was ready to make the crucial step into life-learning skills and toward future independence in life. That's my goal. That's what I told the judge in New Brunswick when I went to, asked the judge to put down that my son is incompetent to make own decisions, so we paid $3,000, $4,000 off our pockets. Everything costs money. I work 14 hours a day, all these programs. But there was always one constant for Victor, that was Ms. Miller. Victor currently, in the past three months, is now volunteering at Children's Specialized Mountainside, not just recipient of a therapy, he's volunteering. And that's because of Ms. Miller, because she put a lot of confidence in my son. I always tried to build his life and therapies in the past four years around the program that Ms. Miller is running. The entire team, everybody who worked with Victor had some input, including the substitute teachers, including the parrot teachers. But there was one constant all these years, that was Ms. Miller. How I will explain to Victor what happened with Ms. Miller? You tell me how I can explain to Victor, and I will. It's hard. For our families, life is not as usual. Nothing is normal in life anymore. But there's no, there's no program manual. You expect your son or daughter to go to college, continue, find work, be on its own, finally give you a free time so you can go to Barnes &amp; Noble and read a book? That's not the case with our families. So please, keep the one anchor, the one beacon for my son, for Frankie, for all the children. Already, I noticed some of Victor's classmates are regressing slightly. I always notice that, because when 19, 20, 21 kicks in, especially the children that are already 19 years old or 20, they realize there is an end of line at school, and after that, they're scared. They don't know what to do. And I would love to ask the board to reconsider, and if anyone wants to speak personally with me, I will take a time off from work. I will meet any, and each one of you. This is an excellent community. This is the reason why I'm here still with Victor. I'm renting all these years. It's just because a lot of programs that Ms. Miller started gave me ideas. I went through different therapies, through my insurance, through, you name it. I mean, his advancement will probably slow down. So I got away from my short note, but I'm speaking from my heart, so I thank you for your time. I appreciate, and I'm looking forward. If you will need more information, more input, more day-to-day life of the families like Victor's family. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm sorry, did you sign in? Yep, there you go. Thank you so much. Did anyone else want to make public comment?
Denise Mayfire. I do not have a child in the GLOW program. I have substitute taught in the middle school GLOW program and in the high school GLOW program. I have nothing but admiration for the program, as you probably know, because I've articulated They've said everything that I think could be said. I've got tears in my eyes. I guess I just wanted to add voice to them. But I wanted to talk about something that came up last week in addition. Mr. Lee, I don't want to mispronounce your first name. Last week, there was some conversation about the other end of the AP classes, and he tried to say... to say that he didn't like the lower-level kids, sophomores, coming into an AP class, and everybody kind of shut him down. And I don't remember who all shut him down. But he was trying to say something, and he was told, have you tried to talk to your teacher? Have you tried to do this? He's about to graduate, and I'm sure he's a smart young man if he's the salutatorian of his class. Anyway, I just, I was here last week, and I was just really, anyway, I didn't like the way he got shut down, and I wanted to articulate that. Thank you. And please reconsider your move, your decision to move Ms. Miller. Thank you.
Thanks, Denise.
So I do feel the parents in the audience deserve to hear from me about the rationale behind the decision the board approved, the transfer of Ms. Miller on the main agenda. And then I'd like to speak to the board, because I believe you all deserve as well, to better understand the rationale for the move. First, let me say that this decision was not made without literally months of discussion among me, Susie Boudin, Dee Dee Decher, the supervisor, and both principals, the middle and high school principal. The issue, the problem we had to solve was, it's not your concern so much, but it at least gives you the explanation, the rationale for why this is all happening. When Margaret Claslow, who you probably recall, at the middle school, left to go to Irving, she left behind the middle school GLOW program. And unfortunately, we didn't, couldn't find anybody. We didn't have anybody in-house, nor could we find anybody with the expertise or the proper credentials. You don't need a special certification to teach the program, unlike the SLE experience. But you do need multiple, either multiple content area certifications, or have been in the business long enough to have been grandfathered into the old certification for special ed, which is called TOH, Teacher of the Handicap. That certification allows the individual to teach any subject. We couldn't find anybody who fit those qualifications to take over the middle school program. So for about a half a year, I don't know the exact number, at least a handful of students, same number of students approximately, who eventually will go into the, replace the kids who are now, the adults who are now doing the high school program, were not being served at all. And what we don't hear or see tonight are the parents and the guardians of those students at the middle school who have been disserviced because we haven't been able to offer any program. So we waited until the end of the year. We'd been talking for months about what to do now. We waited until the end of the year, knowing that we're not going to recommend any abrupt changes midstream for the sake of your kids. But that eventually, we'd have to do something internally, and the only individual who came up at any of our discussions, or who I think is even, has the proper credentials, that is Teacher of the Handicap, it was Ms. Miller. Ms. Miller is somebody who was intricate, not only, as you pointed out, working with Margaret Claslow when we were just starting up the middle school program, but then, of course, built up the senior program. So that's why we're in this place. So that doesn't necessarily satisfy your needs right now, because you have a right to be worried about your kids. But my job, of course, my role is to worry about everybody, all of our kids. So I had to make that difficult final decision, because the buck stops with me, to recommend the transfer of Ms. Miller. And I stand by that recommendation. That being said, I want to share some talking points that I asked Ms. Boudin to provide me about how we are making sure that this decision is in the best interest of your kids. And that includes, by the way, how we're going to transition the kids through the next few weeks and into the summer, so they can feel comfortable with the next person taking over. By the way, Ms. Boudin is a specialist in computer, in community-based instruction at SLE. She has installed programs in every district in which she has worked since she started her career. So I'm confident that she's making a decision in the best interest of the kids and based on her experiences. We have to keep in mind that the GLOW program is not just, it's a program. It's not just about one person. At some point, we're all going to be sitting around at this table. I'm going to have parents in the audience, just like you, concerned about the future when, at some point, Ms. Miller retires. That's going to happen down the road. So we're going to have to come to this decision at some point. And we need to consider that this is a program. It's not about one person. Fortunately, Ms. Miller has institutionalized the things that we've talked about, the wonderful relationships with the community, that won't go away. And that's the whole idea. If you institutionalize a program, it doesn't matter who takes it over, it doesn't matter what superintendent's sitting in my chair, things will continue. We strongly believe the staff we have have the skills and the aptitudes. And in fact, the individual who would be taking over, and I'm going to put it right out there, is sitting behind you, Ms. Pollack, and I do appreciate her being present here. I'm not going to, you know, I'm going to be very transparent and open. It'd be a little awkward if I didn't point out the fact that Ms. Pollack is here tonight. The teacher who's taking over Ms. Pollack is not only very skilled in the area of CPI and SLE, but she's currently teaching the CPI program to your kids. So for the board's clarification, you should know that there are three, if you had to boil it down to components, probably three components to the GLOW program at the high school. There's community-based instruction, which is CPI, in which we teach our students the skills they need to eventually go out into the community and work at the workplace. Then there's SLE, Structured Learning Experience. That's what June Miller's expertise is. That is the program that represents the actual work site experience. Job coaches like Mr. John McClain and others work with our kids side by side to make sure that they're, if they get redirection, they get redirection. And the third component, of course, is the academic component. So all the kids know Ms. Pollack. They might not know her when they're stop and shop, or when they're at the Borough Hall or at the library, but they know her. She's a familiar face, and she's somebody who we're highly respectful of and confident can do the work. So the plan going forward is, next year, to have Ms. Pollack do both the CPI and the SLE experience, and then have other teachers take over the academic piece. So whereas Ms. Pollack was involved in both the academic piece as well as CPI, we now would be having her just take over both those pieces, with the idea being that we can actually build on the success that Ms. Miller already put in place and expand that success. In fact, I'm just going to read a line from what Ms. Boudin shared with me. The vision that she's had is that the CPI and SLE classes don't have so many different sections, but rather the kids see a continuum from one to the other. They take what they learn at the CPI program, and with the same individual teaching them those skills, then transition into the SLE program. Right now, we have two separate people doing that, Ms. Miller and Ms. Pollack. So this is a, I mean, we have a clear plan. We might disagree on what is in the best interest of kids, and sometimes that's what decisions come down to when it comes to educational professionals and parents. You know your kids better than we do, and we feel like we know our craft better than you might. But we really do think this is in the best interest of the students. So to the board, I just circle back to what I said initially. The need here is to maximize our current personnel. We're confident we can build on the success that Ms. Miller has already put in place at the high school, with Ms. Pollack taking the helm, who's already very familiar with the program. But also, finally, reinstitute the middle school GLOW program. One last thing I'll say, and this is really speaking to the board, Finance Chair Mark Krieger and our BA, if we were to not fill the position with Ms. Miller at the middle school, we would have to go out and look and hopefully find somebody. And if we do find somebody, by the way, a Teacher of the Handicap teacher is likely going to be somebody who has to be paid for all the years that he or she has taught, which would mean placing that individual high up on the guide. And our budget right now is not flexible next year to allow for that. So I do stand by my decision. If the board wishes to overturn that decision, it can make a recommendation to rescind the transfer, but it's my intention to continue with the recommendation.
So I'll just respond, and then we'll, I'll give board members a few minutes to respond as well if they want to. So what I see the issue as here is that board members made this decision with your recommendation and Susie's recommendation based on kind of paper, right? Based on kind of credentials and moving and things like that. And we trust you guys to make those decisions. Then you add the additional piece of emotional parents and students, and, you know, a program that all of us, I think at least once, all of us have been, maybe except for Chris, who's just brand new, so that's not his fault, he's just brand new, but have been into that program to see it working and to see how amazing it is. And we're so proud of that program, and we're so proud of the students in that program, and we're so proud of the teachers who have put that program together. And so now, a decision that looks good on paper, when you add the emotional component in it, it makes it harder to make the decision. And the thing that I really appreciate from what I think both the, you know, Ms. Miller and the parents are saying is, the important piece here is the transition. So as wonderful maybe as it sounds on paper, and we've got all the certifications in place, and Ms. Pollack knows the students, and all those things are wonderful, the important piece that seems like hasn't been worked through here is how those students are going to be transitioned from their attachment to Ms. Miller moving forward. And to me, all the rest of it almost becomes the money, the whatever. All of the rest of that becomes absolutely, as a board member making a decision, inconsequential to how do we tran, how do we transition those students successfully? The word that got the most attention for me is regression. That's what scares the pants out of me, is that we have these students that we've worked so hard, these teachers have worked so hard, these students have worked so hard, and these parents have worked so hard. Everybody's worked so hard to build these students' skills. The last thing in the world we want to see is any kind of regression. So here's what I suggest, and then anyone else can chime in. We have something on the agenda tonight, that's to switch SLE hours from Ms. Miller to Ms. Pollack, I believe, for the summer, correct? If we could, without completely throwing everything out of whack, I'd like to see that tabled, and I'd like to see some more conversation going forward as to how our students are going to be transitioned and how we're going to do that successfully. And if we can't come up with a plan to do that successfully, then I think we do have to look at the decision.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree.
I was going to say exactly that word, transition.
Yeah, those are two words that I can't get around, transition and regression.
Right.
I can't, because if you don't have one, you're going to have the other. It's a guarantee.
Right.
It's an absolute guarantee. If our students don't have a good transition, we're going to see regression. And that's, that's the thing that we can't, I can't justify with all of the, anything else, even the money. I mean, we just, we've got three out-of-district placements on here that are going to cost us an extra $200,000 that aren't budgeted. Things come up that aren't budgeted all the time, and we have to deal with them. But what, the piece I can't, that's going to make it very hard for me to move forward, is the thought that, the most important piece hasn't been dealt with, which is the students.
I can guarantee the Board of Education, we're going to come up with an effective transition plan. And I'm going to make sure that I email the board before the week is out about what that plan will be. I'll meet with Ms. Pollack, Ms. Boudin, Ms. Decher, Ms. Assamier, Mr. Ollinger to come together on that. And if Ms. Miller would like to join us, she's more than welcome to do so. But I think at some point, we're going to have to have that meeting, probably within the next couple of days, so I can assure the board that an effective transition plan will be in place.
And so is it okay if we table those items that are on tonight's agenda, just as a kind of stopgap to...
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, so I could see two scenarios. One, perhaps we would have Ms. Miller continue in the SLE over the summer to help with the transition, or if we feel we can make the transition without that, we can just, I can request respectfully that the board allow me to retroactively have Ms. Miller not begin the program, and we can then go back to it in July.
Okay, so we can figure that piece out. So if, and I saw a bunch of nods around the table, so I think that's what we'll do. We'll table that particular item when we get the personnel, and you can help guide us through that. And then the board will look forward to getting more information in the next week about how students will be transitioned.
I just wanted to respond one thing. I totally understand the needs of the whole district and the middle school, which is why, as I said, it was April 30th, you told me. It wasn't until the end of May that I questioned it, because I went to the middle school constantly. I spoke to Mrs. Brady, I met the students, and I spoke directly to Mrs. Boudin about the needs of the middle school students. What I was told initially is to have a CPI program, as Mrs. Claslow had, it was self-contained. That's why they needed my TOH certification, because they told me I would be teaching English, math, history, science, and the CPI. As it was, I was not teaching all those subjects. I wasn't teaching history or science at all. There were different students in the English, math class. I wasn't even going to have a block of like the three periods of all the same students. So it wasn't even possible really to take them to town, because each period's 47 minutes. So without at least a double period, I really can't take them out of the building, which is what they, you know, said was a big deal. Obviously, a big part of the program is, you know, community-based instruction. And when I spoke to Mrs. Boudin, I asked her about that. She told me the needs of the students now are not as critical as, you know, for some reason, there's a little stopgap, which is a couple of years. In Bartle, they have it, and now in high school, they have it, for whatever reason, these couple of years. In middle school, the needs are not for a self-contained program. And that is why I waited. I didn't say anything, as you know, I did not say anything until then, because it's heartbreaking to me to leave, you know, these children. This is everything to me, I mean, this program. And I, I mean, I didn't, Dr. Taylor, the first thing I said to you, when you said to me definitely I was going to the middle school, I said to you, I promise I will do the best job I can there. Wasn't what I felt inside, but it was what I said, because, I said, there's stuff I don't know. I mean, there's tons of stuff. I know I don't know everything. And that's why I found out. I went every day, and if it's not going to be a self-contained program, in all honesty, to go to town, all you need is a double period. You don't need a TOH. You just need someone to teach one academic subject, let's say, English or math, next to the life skills class. Then you have a double period of about an hour and a half, then it's enough to go to town, if you have all the same kids in both. I also, it's not that difficult, I could easily work with someone in the middle school. We have PLCs. Set up a joint PLC between me and a middle school teacher. I will gladly plan it. I will gladly help them, you know, do it. I love this program. I mean, I, like, as you explained to me, we don't want the program to end. And if this was the only way, as much as I did not want to do it, I was doing it. And it was only when I researched it, and I totally, totally, totally understand that it's a big district, and no one knows everything. And that's why I said, it was someone who had to be see every single aspect. I understand, it's like, wow, you know, Ms. Claslow leaves, the program falls apart. Oh, well, Ms. Miller knows how to do it and stuff. And so one person says that, another person necessarily, maybe the case managers, you know, kids have all different case managers. So probably no one even realized altogether that, wow, you know, these kids don't all need self-containment. I doubt that ever even came to anybody's head, until I went in there and I spoke to Ms. Brady, and I said, what's my schedule? And she says, well, you know, you have five in English, you have four in math, you have seven in life skills. I'm like, well, how do I go to town, you know? She goes, oh, yeah, you know? And I don't think anyone thought of that. So that's all I'm saying. It's just, that's why I said, the needs are just in the middle school. I don't feel warrant me to leave the high school at this time, when the high school needs are obviously greater. Okay, so thank you again.
Thank you. Okay, if there is... Can I ask a question? Oh. Is it urgent? It's just really late. Wait. I mean, it, I, I'd like to ask it quickly, if I could. I guess, you don't have to answer this. I'm realizing that I did not understand how the GLOW program worked at the middle school. I thought it would be essentially the same as in the high school, you know, be a self-contained classroom, as I understand it with academics and going, I'm not even sure now sort of how the middle school program works logistically, if it's not self-contained. So if it would be possible, when you address the transition by email or however, to perhaps address that with us too, because I'm not really understanding how Ms. Miller's expertise slots into a non-self-contained program. I know it's late.
Absolutely. Have that worked on by the end of the week.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Okay, so if there isn't any other public comment, I want to thank everyone so much for coming out. We really appreciate hearing from you. Thank you very much. And we will now move on with our board committee reports, starting with Michelle for curriculum instruction.
Okay, so we only have two.
Okay, so, we only have two items here. It's the, number two is the resolution to approve field trip requests, and number three...
Good night, guys.
Good night, guys.
Thank you. Good luck next year. Welcome, other guys. Bye. We'll see you at graduation, it's not goodbye, it's just, see you at graduation.
Okay, so, number three is the resolution to approve the...
Good night, yeah, don't feel like you have to stay at all, please, we get real boring now. Now, we put you to sleep, so just don't...
Thank you for coming. Number three is the HIB incident reports for April. And there's only two, A and B, 1913, 1914.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
It's got late, my brain froze. Okay, we'll come back. Yep. Okay, Mark, Finance?
Yep. So, this is a little bit longer. We've gone over most of these items before, but I have some details on some of the new ones. Item five is the approval of cafeteria bill list, that is new. But also, seven through nine are new, and Linda alerted me that these reports are not quite ready, so I wanna, I'm going to want to table those when we, when we make the motions. So, just mark those off as tabled. Item 11 has additional, on the, on the page six, has some additional professional services. We've engaged the NJPSA for the Bartle principal search. We've engaged this firm listed for CPR and first aid certification, and we've engaged Sarah Scott for occupational therapy, and those three items are new. Under number 21, we have changes in addition, in some out-of-district placements with some slight cost increases, I think only the third one. So, item C on the top of page eight is a small increase in, in the tuition rate from a change of district, a change of out-of-district placement. But then, as Darcy mentioned before, we do, in item number 22, have three new out-of-district placements. These are students who've moved into the district. This'll cost us over $200,000. If you include the ESY placement, I'm not sure this even includes transportation, but with the ESY, we're up to $223,000. This is unbudgeted, so there's some money this year, but going into next year, we're gonna have to make that up somewhere. And this is the problem we have every year. So, we will see. Item 31 is the renewal of a contract with our law firm, hourly rate of $170, which is a $5 hourly increase, which is the first increase in years. And we're getting very good service, so this is something, you know, I recommend. Item 32, coupled with item 33, replacement of concrete sidewalks and walkways at the Highland Park High School, which is our usual replacements over each year for different, different sidewalks, walkways, et cetera. And this will cost $6,052.56 from the lowest bid. Item 34 is a approval of a contract for the installation of security lock and card reader at Irving. That's in the amount of $5,655.50. That did not bid because it was beneath the, below the quote threshold of $6,000. Item 35 is the annual submission of grant application for PSEA and IDEA 2019 and 2020 school year funds. Item 36 is submission of the IDEA grant application. Item 37 is quotes for the purchase of a content filter. This is going, and the acceptance of the low bid at $15,147. This is to replace our old and severely inadequate content filter. This is gonna be rolled into the, into the lease, which means that it'll cost us not that much this year, substantially less, of course, a quarter of that. And it's money that if we had purchased it, which we would need to do anyway, as we had done in the past, the purchase would've cost us a big flat fee this year, as opposed to leasing it out for much less money. I mean, the same amount of money, but much less money in this school year. The 39 is the approval of the contract for purchase of Chromebooks, and that's $274,050. These are the Chromebooks for the one-to-one initiative for each sixth through 12th grader to, to have a machine loan to them by the district. I have some numbers here. This plus the teacher laptop numbers, which I'll mention in a moment, actually, let me do that first and then I'll talk about all of these numbers in one, at one time. The quotes for the laptops come in at, these are the teachers who don't have appropriate laptops in their classrooms. That comes to approximately $113,000 for the winning bid in item 41, which we're gonna table. Turns out, the number wasn't correct, Linda alerted me beforehand. So, we're going to, we're going to table 41, but I want to just go over the whole number...
Linda's saying it's because it's too many laptops is what the correction is.
Is that, is that it? Okay.
Yeah.
Is it 41, or too many?
For 40.
No, no, the quote went out for more laptops than we needed, so we got a revised quote.
We have to revise that, yes. So, to make a long story short, this total amount, which adds up to about, under, slightly under $400,000, if you divide it by four and then there's residual value, et cetera, that comes out to, I think, Linda, you had told me, or Christina had told me, $68,000 number like that, or $70,000. I went back to review, so that, this year, it'll cost us a number like that for those, for the Chromebooks, for each student, sixth through 12, and the laptops for the teachers combined. I went back and I looked at the estimates, or actually, what was budgeted, not the estimates, but the budgeting amounts, if we had purchased Chromebooks for use only in the classrooms, no loans, only the worst laptops that the teachers didn't have or were broken, getting replaced by purchasing, which we had been doing year after year. And I want to just go through those numbers, so everyone gets an understanding of how we're actually saving money by leasing. The laptops for teachers and for the tech team came to $11,500. And again, in this year's budget, before we decided to do leases, which we wanted to lease, but also, it turns out, we save money. Repairs of tech equipment, $19,000. Again, that was budgeted before we made this decision. Fuse and glow equipment, $13,000. Equipment to replace older equipment, $34,500, which was bare bones, that would get us the bare bones of what we actually needed. The real number was 50 or 55,000. But that alone came to $78,000. So, the cost of the lease, I know I did it quickly, is cheaper than what the old way of doing it was, just to buy replacement machines for classrooms, replacement machines for carts for students to use only in the schools. It doesn't include the likely savings of $20,000 or more for buying textbooks, where we can now use online materials rather than buying textbooks. Textbook budget is practically nil going forward in this year, and it hadn't been in the past. So, we're saving a substantial amount of money. These numbers look very, very large, you know, a number like $274,000. That's money that's gonna be rolled into a lease, it's rolled over for four years and there's residual value at the end. So, it isn't, it's, it's large, it's a four-year commitment, but we are saving money by doing this. And actually, aside from tabling, Linda, should we be tabling 40 as well?
I think it's 40 and 41, isn't it?
40 and 41, okay.
Yes.
I'm just looking at the notes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
41 and 40...
40 and 41 is what I have on the printed agenda.
For the teacher.
Yeah. So, I'm gonna be tabling 40 and 41, and I'm also gonna be tabling six through nine. Otherwise, I think I've gone through the whole, the whole agenda.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. So, Linda, we went out for 250, but what's the actual number that we...
160.
160. Okay, so that number will come down significantly then as well.
Okay, great.
Okay. All right. Anybody have any questions on the finance agenda?
Super quick, if you don't mind. It says that the, the language of the resolution is that we're gonna be purchasing these things, like, from a four-year lease? Is that just a technical way of saying, we're leasing them?
Yeah.
It's just, okay, that's...
That's the way I read it.
Okay.
And I think Linda might have...
No, we're going out for lease financing.
Right.
So, we will get a chunk of money, and we have identified how that will be spent, by purchasing the Chromebooks, the laptops, certain infrastructure items like the cloud filter, access points, and switches. I think that's it.
So, when you say we're purchasing them with the lease money, does that mean we will own those?
Yes, we will own them.
Oh, I thought we were...
No, it's a lease, it's a four-year lease.
So, we're leasing them essentially?
No, we are leasing money.
Oh, we're leasing money?
We're leasing the money.
Oh, right. I totally don't understand this. Okay, all right.
Yeah, and that's why I say there'll be residual value, you know, at the end, we'll own those machines and...
I see.
And they're not gonna be, they're not gonna be eight-year-old, 10-year-old machines that we dump, but we'll be able to trade them in towards newer equipment.
Right, I see, I'm seeing, I'm realizing that there's a whole part of this I didn't grasp, and now I'm starting to grasp it, so I'll save you all my processing. Real quick, you did say it's saving us money for repairs. I mean, how is it saving, does this, the money described here, does that include the repairs we will need to make to the purchased items that we will, that we're purchasing with the leased money?
Well, they're leases, I mean, in the sense, they're really leases.
Well, how are they leases? We're gonna own the computers, so if the computer breaks, we can't turn it in.
We fix it, but there is, there is insurance that we will collect. We will have spare equipment.
Right.
Because we're not buying, we're not buying the minimum number of machines, we're actually buying more machines than we actually need to hand out. And so, the, I can say at least for the next two or three years, we will be ahead of the curve. I can't promise you in four years.
So, we will have broken machines, but they will be extra? We'll be able to put them in a room and say...
And fix them ourselves, because they won't let, and we'll collect insurance money, depending, you know, we won't, we won't collect insurance for everyone, we're not making it mandatory. Students with free school lunch are likely to get the insurance for very low or nothing, but we will get some insurance money. The other districts that do this do have pools of money they collect for insurance. I think, I think we won't spend anywhere near the $19,000 as a point. We're likely to spend close to nothing the first year, two or three.
Okay, got it, thank you so much.
Because of extra machines and insurance money and all the other.
And insurance money, so let's say we have a computer that no one has paid, that the student, a student has not paid insurance on this computer and it breaks, do we have sort of a separate insurance policy of our own that covers this?
Not to my, not to my knowledge.
Okay, so the only insurance covering is the $40 that the student paid?
Yes, in a pool.
In a, right, no, in a pool, I see.
That we're self-insuring effectively.
So, it's, there's no insurance company involved? We just get the $40 from every student who can pay and then we use that money? I see, I see. There's no mutual of Omaha involved? Okay. Got it, thank you so much. I realize I was really not grasping.
It's somewhat complicated, but I think the experience, again, I know pretty well now the Edison School District's experience, not to mention that Christina knows at least one or two other school districts, and this is exactly what they're doing. They're finding themselves ahead of the curve.
I see.
By doing it this way, especially, especially in this kind of ongoing repair situation. When you get machines that get very, very old, you have to put budgets each year for 30, 40, 50,000 for buying new ones, you need repair budgets. This is, turns out to be much, much cheaper by having modern equipment and new equipment all the time.
Wonderful, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So, for the, for the equipment for the teachers, that is on top of the $68,000 that you're...
No, it's included. According to Christina, and I...
Well, that's what I got according to Christina, but looking at what we have in the budget, even though we're tabling 40 and 41, it looks like we're getting a separate quote for the teacher laptops.
It's, it's, it's coming from a separate source, but the lease will be against all of the equipment.
Okay, 'cause if you take the 274 in item 39...
Yes.
For 900, that's $68,000. You throw the $15,000 from the line above, it brings it up a few grand per year, you know, and then, I'm not sure where the insurance costs for students on free and reduced lunch, is that picked up by the district?
We haven't decided. They haven't, I mean, I'm not part of that decision.
No, I understand.
The administration hasn't decided, but according to Christina, last I asked, the $68,000 would cover everything in the lease, and I, the only explanation I can come up with, because I did the math also, is that the machines will have residual value, including that residual value in the cost to us.
But, you know, on the same side, you know, the machines that we're moving to Bartle and Irving have residual value, but we've already made a decision to not necessarily repair those machines in Bartle and Irving to save money.
They're old.
They are old.
They're old, many of them, I mean, many of them have no value because they're so old. Some don't, but we're gonna use them.
And in four years, I would assume that a lot of these computers would have no value because they're so old. So, the residual value argument might be out of the question, but, you know, that aside, I'm just having a hard time evaluating whether or not we're on par with where we were before, but even if we are on par, we are actually getting a lot more units and we're getting a lot more technology in front of students.
Right.
On an equity basis, I mean, we're doing a lot more with our dollar. So, that I can understand.
Even if we didn't save a penny, I went into this expecting it would cost more. Even if we're not saving a penny, I do believe, what I've heard, I mean, I can do the math and I can only assume that there's some residual value number put into the leasing that we're doing, but I don't know that and I haven't seen it, and that's really not my job, I'm not paid to do that. But what I see is, if you include the cost of textbooks and, at the savings, excuse me, in textbooks, against all of this, and you add everything up, even if we're not saving any money, it's, it's a bargain.
Yeah, none of it.
And we probably are saving some money, but I can't quantify how much.
And we're saving a lot of frustration on behalf of our students and teachers who are sick of dragging carts around and...
It's so much better.
Susan's just laughing.
Many, many.
You know, like, I mean, every administrator and teacher that we've talked to is just like, "Thank you!", you know, like, I mean, it's, we're just, we're way past time to, to do something like this and make our classrooms a lot more functional.
And, right, and it's, it's also, it, it, it really probably doesn't boil down to the, to the money unless it will cost twice as much. It really boils down to doing something that's, that we need to do.
Right, and I mean, the first time this was presented, I think, three years ago, maybe, or four years ago in finance, we just laughed, because it was hundreds of thousands of dollars just to start the program, where we're like, "Ha-ha, where do you think, like, great idea? Where's that gonna come from?". But this is a way where it's, to do this lease...
Still hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Huh?
It's still hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Hundreds of thousands, but in one year, to like, pay that in one budget, we had to find that money in one budget. We can't find that money in one budget. We can find that money over four budgets, but in one budget, there's absolutely no way to do it. This, there's a way to do it.
And I don't think we realized how pressing the equity issue was at that point. It was exposed.
I would ask Scott and Linda to, if you guys could come back to the Board to try to verify Christina's initial number, 'cause I clearly got in writing $68,000 for everything, as it, as it amortized out over four years, et cetera. I'd like to know that that's really the case, but regardless of that, even if it's $78,000 or what, you know, $88,000, we're still likely to be ahead in any of those cases. We're talking about small amounts of money, you know, relatively small amounts of money, $5,000 difference or whatever.
And you could even throw in, we were gonna spend $20,000 on a bus to keep kids here later, like, you know, there's other, there's other expenditures that we're not going to incur, because now we're going to be able to, the kids are gonna be able to take them with them and, you know...
The most, the most important thing is to, is that we are getting all of the students' machines, and we're getting proper monitoring software, and we're getting our teachers' laptops. I couldn't believe, when I came on the Board three and a half years ago, that every teacher in every classroom didn't have a laptop. And when we hear that they don't, and some of the ones that we do have are terrible, of the ones that we do have are terrible, this is a way to get everybody up to speed.
Are the, are the teachers' laptops in the insurance pool?
No, they wouldn't be, I, I can't believe they would be.
Yeah, 'cause I don't think we could necessarily impose that.
No, no, we can possibly-
Insurance cost on the, on the teachers, but I'm just wondering if there's a, if there's a way to, you know, 'cause there's damaged units, et cetera, from the teachers too, on the teachers' end of things, you know, they're, they're in the same environment that the kids are using them in.
The only difference is those are sitting in classrooms as opposed to students who are taking the machines home and they're in backpacks, and we're talking about students versus teachers, so now there's, I, I can't imagine this, and again, I don't make those rules, I can't imagine there's a plan to ask anyone to ensure the laptops that the teachers are getting, any more than any equipment that, you know, that we see anywhere in the district.
Good.
Sorry, my eye is watering a lot today.
Mark?
Yes?
I was gonna save this for old business, but it's more pertinent to what we're talking about.
Right.
I will be making sure a letter goes out, it might be a letter and honeywell to the middle and high school community, to make sure everybody is aware of what will be happening in the fall.
And make sure of rising fifth-grade families.
Yes, and incoming. Thank you. So we will also be beginning to let parents and students and guardians know that we'll be changing our bring-your-own-device policy going into next year. I don't wanna get into it in detail, because the discipline study group and the central leadership team and the principals are still ironing out the details, but what we are looking at is scaling back the allowance of kids to use their phones, obviously during the school day. So that'll all be in writing as well, we wanna be sure that we give everybody proper notice that this is coming come fall. The letter, by the way, regarding the one-to-one initiative, will include some details like, probably include our frequently asked questions listed in the letter, things like what will happen if a student decides to break his or her own device, the kind of filtering that we're having placed. We'll essentially be taking what Dr. Nocochia presented to the board, putting it in writing for the parents and guardians as well.
Great.
Thank you, Scott. I want to thank Chris, who had brought that up earlier today, this, or earlier this weekend, it's an excellent idea to do this early, so that people aren't surprised two months from now after they, as he suggested, bought a laptop for this, for their child and then learned they're gonna get a laptop, among other reasons, so thanks, Chris. Excellent idea.
Okay, if we don't have anything else urgent on finance, we will move on to personnel?
All right, excellent, thanks. It's pretty self-explanatory, the bolded items are new since our workshop meeting last week. We have an approval of Source for Teachers substitutes, extension to a medical leave of absence, resignation, I'm not wanting to imply that these are unimportant, but just moving through them quickly, we have Ms. Townsend who's resigning, we have Sarah D., or is it Sarah Day?
Day.
Day, I thought so, okay. Ms. Day is resigning, so we're sorry to see them leave. Let's see, number four, we do have a couple of new hires that were, that Scott has proposed for, to be, Scott has proposed several new people to be hired since the last agenda, so I'll, at the end of this, I'll ask Scott if he wants to say a few words.
Just a couple of words. So Jennifer Andrin, number fourteen, was a student teacher in our school district and was wildly successful. We had a great experience with her, she's a Rutgers person, we've had terrific outcomes hiring from within the Rutgers system, so she, I'm recommending to be our next math teacher. She'll also be slotted for the sixth grade position, which is fantastic, because it gives us, Dr. Nocochia in particular, an opportunity to start her off fresh with the training she needs for the math redesign we have in, planned for implementation in 2020, 2021. Number, I'm gonna skip to number sixteen, 'cause that's the other permanent, full-year hire I'm recommending, a school psychologist, this is a big hire, we were fortunate to have quite a few candidates chime in. The individual I'm recommending is actually from New York, she's coming to, she came three hours from New York to meet with us. She's got the proper certifications, that's not the issue. We called her references and I thought I'd just share a couple of, of things spoken about her. Her mentor said that one of her greatest strengths is that she's extremely committed to the kids, they're definitely her top priority. Out of over eighty individuals this person mentored, she's at the very top. Her graduate supervisor pointed out, because this will be her first position, so she's coming out of training, her graduate supervisor said, quote, "If you hire Catherine Leahy, you will be lucky to have her, she's a gem and an amazing psychologist." So we're really, really fortunate, I think, to have that, somebody with that background.
Great, thank you. Number fifteen, we have a maternity replacement, that's Rachel Kidd. Did you wanna speak about her, or are you not prepared?
Just that I did have a chance to meet her, we're fortunate to have somebody who has the proper certification and is willing to take a replacement position. She has multitude of experiences, all were successful experiences, I did verify that.
Yeah, thank you for checking in with me about that.
You're welcome.
Do we, um, this is sort of a general practice question, when you hire somebody, do you check, does an administrator typically go back and check every prior employer and call that employer, or just a select number that are listed?
No, not unless we have questions or concerns. We do rest most of our trust in the person's responses.
Sure.
So, and by the way, so that answers that question, but I do wanna point out that I recognize this is a hire for next fiscal year, and we, as a finance committee and board, agreed that we would be using Source for Teachers as frequently as we can for the under-five-month hire positions. Unfortunately, this was a position which we couldn't fill with Source for Teachers, because it's a very specialized requirement that the person have certain certifications.
Sure, yeah, no, it looks like it would've been a tough one. Okay, thank you very much, Scott. Number seventeen, that's, okay, that's stuff we did last week. The next new one, or one that needs to be tabled, is number twenty-three, we are hiring a paraprofessional at Irving, that's Megan Perry, Peary, excuse me, who many of us know. Did you wanna speak about that, or shall I run this? Okay, so welcome to, to Megan. Number twenty-four, another new paraprofessional being hired, Ms. Curtis Lindsay, I assume that's a Ms., could be a Mr. though. Let's see, sorry, I'm scrolling, scrolling, scrolling as fast as I can, scrolling. Let's see, um, sorry. Summer Hours, Summer Hours, I just saw, our new school psychologist.
When you get to number forty-two, I'd like to comment about that.
Yes, okay, absolutely. Number, okay, number forty, we have a Summer Hours for Child Study Team Testing and IEP Meetings, we're adding our new school psychologist to that. Schedule B appointments are listed in number forty-one.
I have a quick question on those. The ones that are listed as TBD.
Yeah.
How do we approve those without a dollar amount? Shouldn't those just be tabled in the, in the Schedule Bs? There are a lot that say to be determined.
Because we can't fill them, yeah.
So should we just table, oh, should we table those for now and then vote on them when we-
Well, there's no dollar amount on them, I guess, so.
Oh, okay, that's true.
Oh, I'm sorry, the reason for that is because the, the stipend considers the person's experience.
Right.
And since we don't know who that person will be, we can't factor it in.
Gotcha, so once you do, then that'll, a name will go on with an amount on a future agenda?
Once we know how much experience that individual has.
So we're not committing to like, any random amount being paid to the person? Okay, wonderful, thank you, Darcy. That's a lot of people. Okay, on to forty-two, family-school liaison at the middle school, Scott?
Yeah, so this is the individual we hired last year to, who's bilingual, speaks Spanish and English, and works directly with our, our families and guardians after hours, sometimes during the day if we need to have her do so. She goes into the home, she also runs evening workshops for parents. We're fortunate that the federal grant money is still there next year for us to continue that position.
Thank God, all right.
Wonderful, thank you.
And it would be nice at some point next year to hear a little bit more, like, maybe Jennifer could come out to a meeting and talk about the work.
Maybe even have her come out.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, and have them talk about the work that's going on.
I'll make a note of it.
Okay. Cool, thank you. Forty-three is, I just lost it, curriculum writing over the summer, self-explanatory, I didn't listen to these questions. Forty-four, a transfer is being rescinded. Forty-five, movement on a guide for a teacher. Forty-six, extended school year employment, that's for some of our special needs students who enroll in an extended school year program, if they're eligible for that through their IEPs. The, so Linda, number forty-six, the final item, the final row, Ms. Pollak, that's the one that we will be tabling, the resolution to give her twenty summer extended school year hours, we were gonna have the discussion.
Anne, I have a question for Linda.
Sure, go ahead.
Is it possible that we can amend, just table part of forty-seven?
Oh, yeah, I was wondering if we just table-
Just the last item, just not the whole thing.
Table the last row?
Correct.
Or amend the item to delete the last row for now?
Can I go with that forty-six or forty-seven?
That was for forty-six.
Well, there's forty-six and forty-seven, so there'll be a piece.
Those are both of them that are-
Yeah, yeah.
I had a quick question about, it was item number fourteen, I'm sorry to go back that far.
Oh, okay. Could we do that at the end, though? Michelle, can we let Anne get all the way through and then we'll go back?
Yeah, I just thought that, okay.
No, we're just, no. Okay, I'll finish up, and then we'll go back to fourteen. It'd be my pleasure to look back at fourteen. All right. Number forty-seven, yes, I'm going to ask Linda if we could table the final row on forty, yeah, okay, same thing. Forty-eight, extended school year Paris. Forty-nine, extended school year job coach, that is the one, I believe there's a spelling error that Ms., error, that Ms. Ruggiero, is that how you pronounce it?
Yep.
Ms. Ruggiero's name is misspelled, we apologize for that. Forty-nine, so I would like to, it said, I mistyped, now I'm trying to figure out how it's mistyped. Has it, maybe it's been corrected since, I got the note that it was mistyped?
Yeah, it looks-
Oh, it's been corrected, okay. Is that Ms. Ruggiero? Okay, nice, hi, nice to meet you. It looks like it's now been corrected, maybe it wasn't corrected on the public agenda. In any event, the way it's now shown is the way it should be spelled, number forty-nine. And Michelle, want to go back to fourteen?
Okay, so it was in reference to, I guess, related to fourteen, since Mr. Maladnik would be moving to the high school, who would be taking his spot? That was my question.
I'm sorry, who's the individual we refer to?
Mr. Maladnik.
Mr. Maladnik.
He's, he's the eighth-grade global civics teacher.
Oh, forgive me, so the, right now we have an opening, we're yet to, we've yet to fill it, but I will recommend somebody for the eighth-grade position in July, so...
Oh, so you've already advertised?
We posted, we've advertised for the eighth-grade social studies position, is it?
We're not changing anything.
Fourteen's the next one.
Yeah, I think she just got the number.
But are you, is that a question for me, just for the future?
No, I was just curious, because I had no idea if we had, I hadn't seen anything on the agenda about that move until this time, so I was just curious about that.
No, it was there last time.
Yeah, I just didn't, I didn't pay attention.
Gotcha. Mine read numbers itself, if I, if I delete a number, it reads numbers itself, I think it was originally seventeen.
I mean, it's the truth. Also, I wanted to, come on.
Oh, I remember everything.
Yeah, I am paying attention to every word everyone's saying, all the time. Okay, number forty, no, sorry, I'm sorry, there's so many.
I'm so tired right now.
I'm so tired too, I'm so sorry. I just wanted to ask about the curriculum writing, so it would be, it would be from July till August, and my question was about the high school grades and the middle school grades as well, for any of the social studies or history courses, if, 'cause we had talked about the, the Amistad Act.
Correct.
Is that going to be-
Well, as I pointed out at the last curriculum committee meeting, that's up for revision in the next summer, 2020.
Okay, 'cause I thought I saw Mr. Broadfoot on the list.
That's for the-
So is that for something else, honors?
The honors option.
I see.
And history too.
Okay.
By the way, I will be talking at Old Business, Michelle, about what we're gonna be doing with the Center for Holocaust Studies, that's gonna help us expand our professional development efforts in that area, so, it's not as if we're just leaving it entirely, we're gonna continue.
No, that was my, my purpose in asking, was to make sure that it wasn't forgotten. Of course it's not, I mean, we talked about it, I know, for sure, we talked about it. I just wanna make sure that it's on the agenda as far as the rewriting goes, because it's happening in July.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So, the Amistad Act is currently being taught, right, or we are currently teaching?
No.
Oh, it's not yet, it's not yet in place?
Yeah, last summer we created supplements, and we actually paid teachers to create supplement lessons.
Okay.
To fill the gap for now, but recognizing, as, well, I appreciate this is the curriculum committee, with our five-year revision cycle, what it is, we just can't possibly do all of that currently at the same time.
So we have sort of a stopgap Amistad Act?
Yeah, yeah, but that's also, by the way, we also, we started the King University relationship last year as a result of the curriculum committees pointing out the gap, and I'm gonna talk about something called building bridges that I'd like to bring to the school district, that's gonna come out of the Brookdale Center for Holocaust Studies. I'm gonna talk about that in Old Business.
Okay. I just, I wanted to make sure that we were, you know, keeping in touch with the office in Trenton, who handles the Amistad Act and the curriculum writing, because they have lots of resources, so if there's any curriculum writing that's being done regarding pretty much every part of our curriculum, we should be, we should be making sure that we're compliant with that, since that is the law. So, I mean, that would affect the reading courses that I see on this list, as well as history and, I mean, pretty much everything, so just, just to keep that in mind, I just wanted to make sure that we keep that on the table.
So the question is, we should be working the compliance with Amistad Act into all of this new curriculum writing as we go?
Yes, because the idea is that the, it's, right, it's supposed to be across the humanities.
I see. So is that happening now? I mean, is that, is that when we, when we start working on rewriting honors US, well, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, US History Two, honors option, when that curriculum writing goes on over the summer, will that include consideration of how to-
It could, I mean, it's, so frankly, we haven't thought about it now, but not at the forefront, but it's definitely something which we should be considering, if it's applicable to the curriculum.
I mean, it definitely is applicable to-
No, that's the point, though, it's, we're changing the curriculum, because it-
It has to be included.
It has to be included, it's the law. So it's not that it's applicable to the curriculum, it's that we have to change-
I, I'm not unfortunately well-versed in the social studies curriculum, so I can't speak to the particulars, but I know we've discussed this at length in curriculum, and that's when we were led to have to create the supplemental packets, which I can share with the board if you'd like to see it by the end of the week, I have all that documentation.
So can we just assume that when we, we have supplemental packets and now we're gonna be rewriting some of the curricula over the summer, as indicated here?
Oh, 2020.
But this, this rewrite is for this coming summer, right? I'm talking about on the agenda number, I think you're referring to number, what was originally, number forty-three?
Forty-three.
Forty-three. So as we rewrite the curriculum and those listed items, you know, first grade reading, I'm not sure exactly to what classes it applies, that will of course include attention to the Amistad Act, right, since that is supposed to be incorporated into these subjects, probably apart from the-
Oh, ELA.
Well, it goes throughout the curriculum, right, all humanities, so, so second grade reading, fourth grade reading.
It should, that's the idea.
Media grades two through five, as the teachers go through that, they will be incorporating Amistad.
Well, we'll certainly, you know, we sure, we certainly should be focusing on making Well, we'll certainly, you know, we certainly should be focusing on making sure that we are not only fully compliant, but we're aligned with our strategic plan when we work on the ELA curriculum, which is, this is the whole, so this ELA curriculum revamp is part of the five-year cycle revision, this is the real deal, not like we're just patchworking something. This is our opportunity to make sure that we're.
Right, which is why.
Which is why, Michelle, I think rightly.
Exactly.
So like 2020, yeah, so the idea is not wait till 2020.
So this summer, yes, we will be dealing with the Amistad Act as regards to all of these ELA subjects, all of these, sorry, all these humanities subjects.
Yes, and I have spoken with the office administration in Trenton, and they have resources, and they are very willing to work with us. I'm a board member, so I can't do much about that, but I did call to make sure that there was someone on the other end of the line.
Excuse me. Excellent, thank you.
Good job.
All right, good, so that'll be happening this summer.
Thank you for that reminder, Michelle, I'm going to start tripping over my words now, I can't even, yes.
Very quickly, so, in terms of our five-year curriculum plan, which is what, research, development, design, I forget, different steps. So right now we're looking at about 1,000 hours of curriculum writing across the board, and it just seems to be about for every single class, every single grade, and I'm just wondering if our five-year program is actually working in such that we're actually researching and looking at what curriculum we actually have to write?
That's a real quick question?
Or if we're just writing, rewriting our curriculum every five years?
No.
Because it seems like there's a lot of curriculum here that just seems like it's across the board, and it doesn't seem like we put research into it and go, okay, we have to rewrite the curriculum in this.
That's a very valid question.
This grade, in this grade.
Isn't that part of what happens when you rewrite curriculum? I mean, I assume like Algebra II, they don't just sit down and like rewrite it, they, don't they like do research to figure out what best practices are in Algebra II, and, I mean, I don't know, I just.
Well, the other reason, I also think it's a valid question, because, Rob, you have to understand that the curriculum we inherited was written by one single consultant who was hired simply to make sure that we were in compliance for the sake of NJCUSAC. That happened as I was just coming on board, I remember the individual sitting in the Assistant Superintendent's Office, just scrambling to do whatever she could to make sure that we could pass CUSAC, certainly did not, I don't think, include best practices, nor did it include differentiated instruction and all those other things that we're trying to include in the curriculum. So I would say like in another five years, that question, I think even has more validity, because at that point, you gotta, maybe you defer to what Anne said, we have to include best practices every five years, but certainly we need to revise it now.
So that's what's happening now, right, Scott? Can you confirm this summer, when we revise the geometry curriculum, you know, when Ms., I'm sorry, I don't know how to pronounce that, when Mr. Moore revises the Algebra II curriculum this summer, he will not just be checking to make sure we're in compliance, but he will have the opportunity to do research?
Scope and sequence.
Scope, all that stuff.
Yeah, all of that, you should be doing that every year.
Right, so that's what rewriting curriculum means presumably, I hope, I just, I'm asking that, I guess.
I mean, our teachers are trained for a full day by Dr. Nikosia on understanding by design, best practices for writing curriculum, I mean, it's a whole structured system, which we hadn't had in place when I came on board.
Right, right, no, I certainly remember that, okay. And does that leave time for some research and for some sort of creative brainstorming about curriculum, or is there really only time to sort of sit down and like plow through it as quickly as possible? Like, I don't know what 29 hours means.
That's a good question. You'd have to ask a teacher, I mean, my impression is they're all in a room together, so I can't imagine that they're just scripting.
Right, okay, yeah.
So, right now, we're not necessarily seeing the fruits of monitor and evaluating the process, but we're, because we're still going through some of the curriculum that was written by the single person. Is that, is my understanding correct there?
You have to repeat that.
So you were saying that one person was writing a lot of the curriculum in the past? So, right now, we have first year's research, second year design, third year implement, fourth year monitor, fifth year evaluate. So right now, a lot of these curriculum is either in the, in the early stages, so we're just in the research or design, whereas in three or four years, we'll be monitoring, monitoring and evaluating this curriculum. So when we get back to the design portion, we might not be redesigning every single one.
Especially if there's continuity at the central office level, and the vision is there for Cocker Math and the Writers and Readers Workshop model, you should just be tweaking.
We should just be tweaking, because right now we're looking at about 1,000 hours at about $48,000 to rewrite all this curriculum.
Right.
But the goal here is, in a few years, where we have all of these evaluated.
That's right, I forgot about that.
To only look at and go, okay, we only really need to focus on about 20 of those at five hours each.
I can't commit to the number, but I could say the likelihood is we're not going to have to spend as much money on curriculum revision.
Hopefully, but that doesn't mean that the state doesn't change its guidelines, and then we have to do it again just because of changes.
And the vigilance that a board and administration has to take is never-ending. Scott, you talk about the district hiring a consultant to write, to, you know, to pass the state guidelines and writing curriculum all summer like crazy. My first board 30 years ago, they couldn't find a curriculum, they literally had no curriculum, it wasn't written down anywhere. So everyone worked all summer, all the teachers, the administrators, board members were shuttling stuff between people to get a curriculum written so that the state would have a written curriculum, you know, not online in those days, and not fail and lose certification as a district. And then a system was put in place, and now we're, it sounds like five years ago, we were back in the same place. So it's like constant vigilance is needed, otherwise you don't do it, and it means you have to budget for it every year. If not 48,000, maybe, you know, 55,000 or 40,000, but I think you just have to do it constantly.
Okay. If there isn't anything else on curriculum, yeah, we're good?
Good.
Okay, let's move on to policies, Mark?
Yes, so we went over these policies last week, we had two corrections. Chris pointed out a poor set of wording in 2540, so that last paragraph is changed to say, "The final decision on controversial reading matters shall rest with the board after careful examination and discussion of that, of those instructional materials," and it wasn't worded as well before. That's changed in this document. And then the other item which Michelle pointed out is the policy on use of physical restraint, which I believe we either have a very old policy, out of date or no policy, but we really need it. We changed this to be called 5561, Use of Physical Restraint and Seclusion Techniques for Students, not only for students with disabilities. We changed some of the wording to reflect that, which was the second point, so the wording takes account students with or without disabilities in the first paragraph. And then on a few bullets down, a few paragraphs down, it says, it talks about staff members. Staff members who are involved in the restraint or seclusion of a student shall have received training, as opposed to will be trained, and you don't know when they'll be trained, so shall have received training and safe techniques, et cetera. And this policy, we've reviewed it a lot of times, we need to, we need, it's so much better than what we have, and it's so much more serious, and it's, I think, so good compared to what's out there, other policies like it that we've reviewed. This is something we really need to pass and get it on the books. And those are the changes, otherwise the others are, seem to be all fine on review.
Okay. Any questions for Mark on any of the policies? No? Lynda, there was a correction to, on the, the hourly rate for curriculum writing, that's item number 43, agenda item 43, it should be 3980, not $48.
That's a quote, in contract.
On Schedule C. Okay. Thank you for catching that. Okay, Monique, you have anything for us for Equity and Excellence?
I do, so tonight we are going to move to accept the recommendation to approve the submission of our 2019 to 22 Comprehensive Equity Plan Statement of Assurance to the Middlesex County Office of Education, and we discussed that. We do have some items here that we wanted to note that we are looking to improve, and that includes the representation of non-traditional students that are underrepresented in certain classes, and we're going to be working on that area, although, again, we noted that we were in compliance technically with what's required.
Okay, does that make sense to everyone?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's like, as much as anything is going to make sense at this point, yes.
Absolutely. Okay. Anybody have any questions for Monique? Nope. Okay, so seeing none, we do have another public comment section now, so if anybody would like to make further public comment, now would be the time, you can come up to the podium.
Board action, maybe.
Oh. Oh, yeah, right, because we switched everything, sorry.
We moved them.
We did.
We moved them.
Well, it doesn't look like anybody was moving anyway, so we'll, you'll get a third chance, we'll do our board action items, and then you'll get a third chance. Okay, so I'm sorry, Michelle, could you move the curriculum and instruction items for us?
Yes, I would like to move items one through three.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? No, seeing none, Lynda, could we please have a roll call? Ms. Simorostie, yes. Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner? Oh, I'm sorry, he left.
Oh, I see.
He's enjoying dinner with his wife and children.
I miss that.
Okay. Actually, he's probably been home tucked in by now.
Oh, God.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Wake up, Mr. Magaziner!
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Mr. Roslevich?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. He left right after the.
Before we started?
Yes. Okay, Mark, could you move the finance and facilities items for us?
Yes, I'm going to move items one through 39, I'm going to also table items six through nine, and 40 and 41.
Did that nicely. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? No. Okay, seeing none, Lynda, could we please have a roll call? Ms. Simorostie?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Mr. Roslevich?
No on 38 and 39, yes on the remainder.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Okay, and Anne, could you please move the personnel items?
Yes, thank you, I'd like to move numbers one through 49, with the two exceptions noted, the two tables where we're going to table, the two tables, we're going to table the last row of each table.
46 and 47.
46 and 47, yes. Please table or delete the final row, we'll go back to those as we discussed, and number 49, we'd like to correct the name of Ms. Ruggiero if it has not been corrected.
And then number 43, also, we're correcting the amount from 48 to 3980. I apologize, yes. That one too. No, no worries, I wrote it down, sorry. Okay.
Got it.
Almost, okay, yes. Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion?
Yes, please. Going from 43, I was looking, and we just approved in the beginning for the 2018-19 school year, a lot of the ELA curriculum for the first grade, second grade, third grade, et cetera. So now I'm trying to understand what the revision is between writing and reading, and whether or not we're, what we're doing to the curriculum, where we're breaking out writing and reading as a separate curriculum.
It's been different.
That's a question I'd have to ask Ms. Fitapaldi, I just don't know what the differences are there.
They are taught separately in elementary school, there's Writers Workshop and Readers' Workshop, they're two.
Two different skills altogether.
Separate programs.
Yeah, and the curriculum that we approved last November, I guess, for 18 and 19.
So you're wondering why again?
Third grade ELA.
This is, Ms. Gappa teaches kindergarten, and Ms. Lucas teaches first grade, so I don't know if, it's five hours for each of them, for the whole month, so they're not rewriting the entire curriculum in five hours.
Just revisions.
They're revising, that's all.
Yes, they are revising, I'm wondering why they're revising something that we just approved last year.
Because five hours after a year doesn't seem.
They probably found some things that made problems.
Inordinate.
Curriculum document, it needs to be revised on a regular basis, that's the five-year plan, that's what we do. Like, after five years.
After five years, we're talking about after a year.
No, I'm saying after five years, there are so many revisions that it needs to be looked at entirely as a whole curriculum, all of the units that are taught, they need to be, you know, checked into, there's things that might be there that are outdated, there's things that might not be best practices anymore, so that's why revisions are made on a regular basis.
Maybe the verbs unit didn't go well or something, so they would.
Yeah, I was going to say, even just looking at what happened, what went well, what didn't, five hours is really a drop in the bucket, I think.
Five hours is nothing.
Five hours, amongst all these different, it's up to 1,000 hours and $49,000 worth of curriculum revisions.
I'd be glad to follow up with an email.
Particularly on some of these, which were just approved by us a year ago.
Kindergarten, I mean.
You know, that's a lot of money for us to spend every summer, if we're looking at $50,000 a year every summer to rewrite, you know, small amounts of curriculum revisions at a time.
My understanding was the ones that are like 25 hours, that those are new. We didn't just do kindergarten reading by, three on number 43, ELA kindergarten reading, 25 hours? Are you saying we just, a year ago, did kindergarten reading for 25 hours? I don't think so, I mean, maybe, maybe I'm wrong, but I.
Even if we did, five hours.
But we're talking about 60, we're talking about 60 hours, excuse me, we're talking about 60 hours, not 1,000 hours, Rob. I added up the five-hour blocks, that's 60, it's a total for the whole district of 60 hours of revision writing.
Oh, I thought he was saying all.
Against 1,000 hours of curriculum writing, it's a drop in the bucket, as a total.
Yeah.
Hundreds of dollars, not tens of thousands.
And I wouldn't have a problem with a five-hour tweak of any particular curriculum, personally, I don't have a problem with that, I mean, I think that's what we want our teachers to be doing, is constantly looking at what they're doing, what can be.
We do want this.
Yeah, so. Okay, isn't anything else on personnel? No? Could we get a second?
A second.
Oh, we already did, we already got a second. Can we get a roll call? That's what I need. Ms. Simorostie?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Mr. Roslevich?
No on 34 and 43, yes on the remainder.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Okay, and Monique, could you move the equity item, please?
Oh, I just lost my place, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, skipped policies, sorry.
Oh, policies.
I'm not thinking.
Okay, I'm going to move items one and two and policy.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? No? Okay, seeing none, Lynda, could we have a roll call? Ms. Simorostie?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Mr. Roslevich?
Yes on one, and abstain on two.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Okay.
Monique. So this is just moving to accept the 2019-22 Comprehensive Equity Plan Statement of Assurance.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Nope. Lynda, roll call, please. Ms. Simorostie?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Mr. Roslevich?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Okay, and now, if there's any additional public comment, that would be the time. Nope, everybody looks pretty comfy, which is hard to explain, because those are really uncomfortable little benches you guys are sitting on, so, kudos to all of you, we at little benches you guys are sitting on, so, kudos to all of you. We at least have a little bench over here. I give you guys a lot of credit for sticking it out. Well, more than they've got.
That's true.
Okay, so, Board Liaison Reports, just that we just kinda say, anybody got anything really crucial from any other liaison reports, because it's late.
Well, my commission discussed other P's for book, so perhaps we should open the floor?
Yeah, no.
Oh, gosh.
I think we'll, but I will mention that, um...
I had one thing.
Okay, yeah, 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 hold on, just give me one second, while the thought is still in my head, and before it escapes. Now that we have Chris, I want to give him a spot. Yay! And, right now, Ann has both Human Relations and Commission for Universal Access, so I think we were thinking we would move Universal Access over to you, Chris.
Okay, thank you.
So we will make sure whatever connections need to be made there, or made, and...
So far, nothing's happening, because the meetings are on board meeting nights, but that may change.
Right.
Yes, I will.
But we'll formalize that, and make introductions, and do all that kinda good stuff.
Yes, on it.
Okay, and, and I do want to, I'm gonna, before, between now and the next meeting, I am gonna talk to Ruth about, since CPAC seems to be defunct at this point, seeing what maybe we can work out for next year, to have Ruth do some interacting with the PTO. I think that would be really nice to develop a channel of communication between us and the PTO.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, I'll talk to Ruth about that before July. Okay, Michelle, sorry.
Okay, so there are two quick things from the Board of Health. One of the Board of Health members attended a public health conference, and they talked about smoking violations. And then, they looked into the Highland Park Code of Conduct, and found that it's a Level Four violation under substance abuse. It involves contact with the police and reporting to the state SSDS, which I'm not 100% sure what that stands for.
I'm sorry, you totally lost me. You're saying that the policy...
The code is a level substance, so for smoking of any kind, cigarettes, vaping, I believe, like, that would all come under that umbrella. And under the Code of Conduct, it says that it is a violation, Level Four, and it requires or involves both contact with the police and reporting it to the state. Then, she looked at the state guidance, and it says that tobacco is not a reportable offense. And so, they suggested at the state level that it be considered a teachable moment, rather than something that should be punished. So, more about, I roped Ann, honestly thought you would have some answer as you were on the Discipline Committee, like, when the Code of Conduct was being, but I don't...
I'm actually not.
Okay, so...
I just had some random ideas to throw out.
No, random ideas are always good, but I think I was thinking of Monique, and then, I don't know, somehow cross-pollinated Ann. So, the Board of Health wanted some feedback on that, some insight as to how that came to be, so we can...
Are they saying that if it's a Code Conduct Four, that we have to report it to the police?
No, 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 they're saying that our Code of Conduct is that, but that's...
Oh, I, I get it.
Yeah, and I'm not sure, I'm not sure violations have to be reported, law enforcement? I don't know, those later changes that did a, of the column, boxes and check off, after consultation with our counsel, and we were advised, that instance, he would, that column, that box. But, yeah, can you, because I'm not...
Is it because school property is a no-smoking zone under state guidelines?
That's a good question.
Yeah.
Because, you know, it's, I forget how it ended up there. I remember, I think I fielded this question with Rob and...
I'm really impressed at how quick on your computer. I feel like anytime I need to find something on my computer, I'm like, wait, give me a minute.
Yeah.
And I have to, just like...
So, the Code of Conduct talks about the use of tobacco on school grounds, I mean, that's the pertinent piece here, I think?
Yeah.
Yes, and they're talking...
And it is a Level Four, and our Board Attorney did review this Code of Conduct, and it does indicate we're supposed to contact law enforcement.
That does sound, can we just look into the...
Did you just say that the Board Attorney did?
Did, yeah. Because initially, we did not have that as a Level Four, and it was after consultation, but I think, as to Darcy's point, just more understanding as to why, does it have to be? Apparently, it doesn't. State regulations indicate such, according to what the Board of Health reported, that's conflicting with what we were advised by our attorney.
Right, so the SSDS is the Student Safety Data System Guidance.
Mm-hmm.
So that's a Department of Education document. It's dated 2017, 2018, so it's very new. So that might be why things were not, you know, in sync with it, I don't know, but it's something that I think that we should revise if we haven't yet, you know, in practice.
Michelle, can you send me something? You look like you're reading online.
Oh, yeah, I'll send you the actual email from the Board of Health.
Thanks. The email about, because it's, about the opioid, no?
Relax on.
Thank you. Another pharmacy, thank you for that.
Sure, yeah, I was gonna mention that, too.
Okay, good, go ahead.
Yeah, so, the Board of Health wanted the public to know, and wants, is what you take if you have some sort of opioid, I believe?
Yes.
And so, it's free, there's no prescription necessary, it's a non, and they would, you know, have our help in whatever way we can help to get the word out about that. And just, do have it available.
Now, and one thing to say is, is the date is, I read that mail also, the date is June 18th, and it sounds like it's one date for all these drugstores around the state. If you walk in to write in on June 18th, we'll give you, if you think you need one, to have for someone you know who might have a problem with opioid, or, or whatever it's called.
Right, so that's your opportunity to get it, and...
That's right.
Service, there are human services that are distributing it, right there, right for anyone.
Doc, in fact, there is a discrepancy here. So our Code of Conduct states we have to report it to the state, but the state points out you don't, so, it's that.
Okay, yeah.
Call.
So, does anything, from liaison positions? Okay, I will give you the Cliff Note, Cliff Note version, Cliff's Note version, I think it's, sorry, version of my President's Report, which is the eight, the education, and the eight, regulations that were put into place in 2016 by the Christie administration, and the long and the short of it is, is that until 2022, so the classes of 2019, 2020, 21, 22, will all be able to graduate using the whole, I always wanna say this word and can never say it right.
Penetrating.
It's a good one, too, I don't think I can say that...
Penetrating, penetrating.
The whole, the whole menu.
Heck of...
Yes, LA, I don't buy it. So, so that is a small victory, and now, the state has a little bit more time, a little bit more breathing room to come up with graduation requirement, or exit requirement. There will likely be some advocacy around getting rid of the testing requirement altogether. We'll keep everybody up... In July, update on our appeal of Hatika's expansion, the state and the charter schools. Skouski in North Brunswick, and I'm sure a bunch of us will all put our heads together and figure out what, what next. Kind of started, and now there's districts that are disturbed, and getting worse. I got some Oprah documents to look at Hatika's enrollments here, and just, of students has gone down to 39, and more students from all over the rest of the state. So, it's just kind of preposterous, and this is not what the Charter School Act intended, and as we move forward, we'll see if there's anything we can do about that, too. And district. And I will keep everybody updated on that as well.
I thought, oh, business, we were going to talk about the communications, communications?
But he did already.
He did already.
Oh, gosh.
Yeah. Okay, yeah.
I was gonna say something regarding all the business, just wanna put it on record real quick.
Now, going to watch this as a recording, that we've been working diligently with the students, particularly at the middle school, where we've evolved in a recent incident, continually, our restored, Ms. Lux has been, during it, which I, the board now, and I'll be very quick, and then we'll sign off. The Center for Holocaust Studies, at, connect, turns out that they're working on a program that's already been in place in Malachi, helping us establish safe environments for kids when it comes to bias, discrimination, exactly the issues that we're confronting. And, a meeting in about two weeks, so I'll follow up with the board probably in the fall. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Can I get a second? Second, all in favor?
Hi.
All right, good night, everybody.